All right, it is well, it was 12:56 when I said that it was 12:56 and I'm bringing the public hearing back into session. I'm going to wait for the rest of the advisory members to turn their cameras on. So I know that you're all here. As I threatened, I am now eating my frozen pizza. All right. And just to let people know, the next couple of articles 12 and 13, I want to try to run as a consent agenda. And then later, I'm going to try to run. Articles 25, 26, and 27 as a consent, and then articles 28 and 29 also as consent, and I'll explain those.
Yep. Can you not do 13 as a consent?
Sure. All right. Well, actually, Sean, let me. The reason I was going to do 13 and 14 as a consent, I'd I'd heard that you may want to remove the tree removal from the warrant. That would therefore make it a no action. Article 14 is also going to be no action because there are no uses of free cash outside of what's stipulated in the warrant. So I just want to cover two no actions in one. But if that's false, then just let me know and I'll I'll keep it as its own separate article.
That's fine. I just, there should be some discussion around it. So if you were grouping, I want it, I still want to be opportunity to discuss.
Now, for every article, even in consent, all the the public comment and advisory discussion periods will be open. They'll just be sort of combined.
Okay.
All right, I do believe I can visually see at least a quorum of advisory. So I just want to do a quick. Want to do a quick roll call to reopen the hearing. So this is so actually, it's 12:59. We're going to reopen the hearing. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly. Peter Galitano.
Hi.
Jane Materazzo.
Hi.
And I'm also an I, so that is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 people voted. So the hearing is now reopened. It is 12:59 PM. So for those that are just getting here, the next two articles, which is Article 13 and Article 14, I intend to run as a consent agenda. Reason being, I believe both of these are going to be unanimous, no action votes. Article 13, for the reason that I believe the DPW director is intending to withdraw this article from the warrant, and I will certainly have an opportunity to explain that decision. And then Article 14, because of the fact that there are no uses of free cash that are not otherwise stipulated in the warrant. So I am now sort of officially recommending that we take Articles 13 and 14 as consent. I'm going to read the titles out, and if any advisory members want to hold one of these, you can call it a hold. So Article 13, tree removal. And Article 14, use of free cash. All right, we're going to take these as consent. I'm going to allow the DPW director, Jeanne Clean, to discuss the tree removal article.
Thank you. So after a lot of discussion in the last meeting. Well, sorry, the last select board meeting, we pulled it out of the capital. Article, and they added another article. And in the course of discussions with a couple of other people, we decided it's probably best to just pull this. I know that's completely out of character for me. But with at least both groups here, it's worth considering removing the tree removal article from using free cash with the understanding that we have some money now, we have money built into the budget for tree removals, which doesn't fund us at the pace we've been going, but we also have put in and asked for an ARPA fund to basically to replace this. So the assumption is there's a high likelihood we'll use ARPA funds for tree removal. We also did put it into the list for the earmarks with the state. We I'm not sure when we'll know whether or not that goes through, but I'm confident we'll get funding one way or the other. If not, everyone in this meeting should know we'd probably be coming back mid-year if there was no other sources of funding for possibly a reserve fund, but I think that's highly unlikely that we'd get to that point. The downfall is if we keep it on, we're going to tie up the free cash. And then if we if we do go to fund it with with ARPA funds, the free cash would be locked up until we release it a year later, which really I don't think it's a good idea.
All right, thank you. And just to get the sort of presentation of Article 14 out of the way. Reason being that all of the recommended uses of free cash this year are already covered in other parts of the warrant. I don't know if Heidi, if you're here right now, if you could confirm that that fact, that might be helpful, but pretty sure it's true.
Yes, this typically is where you'd vote free cash for something we haven't discussed or to reduce the tax rate, which we are not doing this year. So it's already covered in other areas.
Thank you. All right, so I will open the public comment period for the consent agenda on Articles 13 and 14.
I don't know if it's a, sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it's relevant, you know, because it's obviously it's being pulled, but the select board did actually vote on in both can both articles to support 5-0. And one was on March 10th, the other one is on March 17th. I do want to make a general comment that the actual for the earmarks actually is ranked number one to request earmarks. So I even hope to get an earmark even over ARPA funding.
Great, thank you. Any additional public comment? Last call for public comment. Sean.
I don't know if it's now or after public comment, we might want to ask select board to discuss and vote. Because they were voting to support it, I'm asking to remove it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. However, I guess to me, because at the town meeting, the only thing that actually matters is the motion being put forth by advisory, which then town meeting would, you know, choose to either approve or amend or reject. And so if the motion is already for no action for this reason, I guess in terms of the the mechanism, it doesn't matter probably, but I'm open to whatever whatever Eric feels about that.
Well, we select what does report their vote at town meeting. I could back it. So it goes one of two ways. I'll open this up to the select board. We could actually, you know, the chair could actually give a qualified vote to simply said, you know, before his withdrawn report, we voted to support it. Or we could revote right now. And if there's any discussion amongst the board of if as a preference. Yeah, Paul, you're muted, Paul, also.
I'd move to support the recommendation by the DPW chief.
Withdraw.
Yes.
Support the withdrawal. Marian, you want to comment?
I would vote this the same way, but I I do have one caveat, and that is that the the tree removal rate is so important for a lot of reasons we don't have to discuss. Are you confident that the alternative funding, ARPA, or the earmarks is sure enough that we're not shortchanging ourselves?
I mean, probably as far as a question to Sean, I will tell you that it is my intention to support this for ARPA fundings. I might even may a qualifier on it, to be honest, to see when the air mark comes in, because, you know, we have a bunch of things going at once. It was ranked number one on the air mark. And if it doesn't get a mark, I intend to, you know, support if ARPA funds myself. So that's, you know, my opinion. And I support that and not tying up free cash unnecessarily. So that's something I support this overall removal, you know, for those reasons myself. I don't think anyone else has any comments along those lines there. So how does this? How does this vote work? So actually, we vote to not support, or you know, I mean, because now we're basically voting to support a withdrawal, which is kind of odd.
Eric, I'll make a motion. I'll move that we revote on our support for for this article, for the true removal article and and then I guess we'd make a second motion as to how we want to vote.
All right, so I have a motion to to revote. I have a second.
Second.
All right, Jeff, I'll favor Jeff.
Hi.
Marian.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
And I might as well, George, I can't see. You must allow.
Then I'll make a motion to I'll make a motion to support the withdrawal of this of this article or to I don't know how we how do we word this? I don't want to say we don't support it.
Does a
I guess we we can, yeah, we'll we'll vote to recommend no action on this article.
Okay. Okay, recommendation, no actual, which is qualified just based on due to the withdrawal by the proponent. I think it says a friendly amendment to say that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm favorite Jeff.
All right.
Marian.
I.
George.
All right.
Paul. And I might as well. Okay, this is like boards vote.
Steve, sorry, you're muted.
All right. Any further public comment? And last last call for public comment.
Got a question.
Yep.
If we're freeing up free cash, does that mean that we can use free cash now towards some of the capital items that we were thinking about borrowing?
Yes, I think that yeah, I think in in terms of the accounting that the treasurer had had prior to this meeting, that would free up some free cash. Any further public comment? Right. Closing public comment, opening advisory discussion on the consent agenda on Articles 13 and 14. All right, closing advisory discussion, reopening public comment. Last call for public comment. Right, closing public comment and opening the advisory voting session for the consent agenda on Articles 13, tree removal and Article 14, use of free cash.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
Oh, sorry, Steve. I move no action on Article 13 and 14 considered together as consent agenda article. BPW director has indicated its desire to withdraw Article 13 tree removal from the warrant. And for Article 14, use of free cash, there are no additional recommended uses of free cash that are not otherwise specified in this warrant.
I have a motion in a second. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? Take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galitano.
Hi.
Steve Lee.
Hi.
Jane Materazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
And I'm also an I, motion carries 8-0. All right, on to Article 15, which is amend Chapter 7A of the General Bylaws Council on Aging. And we have a representative from the Council on Aging here to present.
Yeah, Pete Hogan.
All right, go ahead, Pete.
Yep, as we explained previously, Sherburne is one of only three towns in the Commonwealth of Mass in which the Council on Aging operates as a supervisory board versus an advisory board, which is an older structure. To change the COA from a supervisory board to an advisory board, the town bylaws need to be amended. The current town bylaw and language, Sue, do you have that's? Maybe she's not on, okay. Vital language relating to council and aging states in the section six, council may appoint such clerks and other employees as it may require. The proposed change to second section six is provided by town council is as follows. There should be a director of the council on aging appointed by the town administrator upon recommendation by the council on aging. The director shall hire all of the staff positions for the council on aging, and the director shall be supervised by and shall report directly to the town administrator. In support of this amendment, the Council on Aging at its last board meeting voted unanimously to recommend the change, and I should add that there is no financial impact on this change.
Thank you. And Sue, I assume since you were sort of running the slideshow, you have nothing particular to add to that. You're muted. Okay. All right, public comment period is open for Article 15. Council on Aging General Bylaw. Yes, Eric.
Yep, the select what voted on March 10th to support this by zero.
Thank you. All right, any further public comment? Last call for public comment. All right, closing the public comment period and opening advisory discussion on Article 15 Council on Aging Bylaw.
Steve, I move favorable action on Article.
Oh, wait, this is still discussion. This is not the voting session yet. Sorry, Steve. I know, I wish I could just charge ahead too, but all right, I'll close advisory discussion and reopen public comment. Last call for public comment. All right, closing public comment now, opening advisory voting session.
I'll try again. I'd like to make a motion for favorable favorable movement of Article 15 to amend Chapter 7A of the General Bylaws on the Council on Aging.
All right, I've got a motion in a second. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galitano.
Hi.
Stephen Lee.
Hi.
Jane Materazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
I'm also an I, motion carries 8-0. All right, on to Article 16. Change Town Board of Assessors from elected to appointed. And let's see, Drew, are you here?
I am, yep.
Awesome.
Okay, and I have a presentation. Let me just pull that up. Okay, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And I've presented this to both advisory and select previously, so you know, let me know how much depth we want to go into here. The crux of this, though, is exactly, Steve, what you said, we are proposing to authorize the select board to move from an elected board of assessors to an appointed board. The reason to do this, number one, it's, we would implement a recommendation from a 2011 report by UMass Boston on the town's operations. You know, this is the kind of board that has primarily ministerial and technical duties. There is training required by the Department of Revenue in order to be qualified to sit on a board of assessors. You know, it is it is not the kind of thing where this board is providing a check or balance on any other aspect of town government. Its operations are a little bit opaque, so it's difficult, I think, for the lay public to understand, number one, precisely what the job entails. And then number two, you know, whether the members of the board are performing adequately or not. So that's that's kind of the rationale for making the change. Why make it right now? Because it's a pretty challenging time to be an assessor anywhere. And in the case of Sherburne, those challenges are married to the fact that that taxes, property taxes, account for nearly 90% of the town's budget every year. And, you know, managing new growth, managing challenges like the the recent utilities challenge of the tax rates that are that are being imposed on them for their their equipment. I think if we do not have professional assessors providing advice to to the assessor on, you know, board roles, we're missing an opportunity to to support and and kind of maximize the effectiveness of of the assessor in town. The other challenge is it's hard to find people to do this, in part because you have to take this three or four day training that's offered by the DOR within your first two years of being elected. But, you know, just historically, in living memory, I don't think we've had a board seat that is that is had multiple candidates running for it. Every election has been unopposed. And the last thing is, you know, this is just consistent with good governance and might as well start implementing these best practices today. So you know, in terms of what this looks like, the the statute that we will be operating under Chapter 41 authorizes the select board to appoint individual assessors board members for three years. The the budget impact, we estimate to be about $5,600 per year because professional assessors would need to be compensated per meeting. For in terms of the process, this requires a vote of the town. We need to identify and recruit candidates to sit on the board. And in terms of the current composition, elected board members will continue in their seats until either their appointments expire or until the select board appoints members to fill the seats currently occupied by the elected members. So I'll pause there. Any questions?
All right, the public comment period is open, and Nancy has. You're muted, Nancy.
Nancy Hess, 64 South Main Street. I'm speaking as a taxpayer and former collector for the town. I'd like to ask that if you do support this article, you stipulate in your motion that at least one position shall be held by a Sherburne resident so that the taxpayers' interests are represented on this board. You do not serve because of what you are paid. You care about the town you live in, as is true about most people who serve on our boards and committees. None of our other boards or committees have no town representation on them. The assessing department is the foundation for the town's finances, and this board is the oversight for that department. This board signs off on the values attached to every home, the taxes we must pay, whether we qualify for an exemption, an abatement, or special classification, and that it's all done accurately so we don't waste resources by landing in court. They must oversee and sign off on a tax rate in a timely manner, assuring that due diligence has been done so all new growth is captured and an appropriate overlay is determined. They must sign off on all commitments for collection of taxes so the collector can issue bills in a timely manner to assure the ability of the town to pay its bills, keeping the Department of Revenue, the auditors, and bond rating agencies happy. It is prudent to have someone on this board with a vested interest who lives with what is done here, and we should not leave that to chance. I do not believe that the time we are allotting and the token amount of money we are proposing to pay is enough motivation to make anyone really care enough to take the time to know our town, our goals, our priorities, and what we really care about. It would be sad to see these processes become just a minimum perfunctory pocket money pastime. Please guarantee taxpayer representation on this board by stipulating in your motion that at least one position shall be held by a Sherburne resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Eric.
It does a simple report that on February 12th, the boards voted 4-0 to support.
Thank you, Paul.
So I wanted to respond to what Nancy just said. I I commend her for the idea that there should be a Sherburne resident on the the Board of Assessors. But from a legal perspective, that creates a huge problem for the town. If we can't find a local person to serve, we'd have no Board of Assessors because one has to be a local resident. And all the actions that are taken or should be taken all become null and void. We're we're paralyzed. Or we have the alternative of let's grab anybody out of the off the street. If they're a Sherburne resident and they're old enough to hold the office, let's put them in there. And that defeats the purpose of having professionals and competence. So I think as a as a select board member, of course, I'm interested in having a Sherburne resident serve. And I agree with the notion that a Sherburne resident knows the community, is invested in the community, and would be inclined so to appoint. But to make it a legal requirement, I think, is a mistake for all those legal reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew, did you have any response to Nancy's request?
Um, you know, I don't think I have anything to add beyond what Paul said. I will just offer for context on the general way in which the article is written, you know, leaves discretion with the select board to appoint, you know, local members if if that is the way they want to go.
Thank you. Nancy.
I'm not a legal scholar, but I believe from my past experiences of hiring that you have to take the best resumes that come in. You don't get to pick and choose by saying, well, we want to take this person even though they aren't as qualified as someone else. I think that leaves us over open to suit. And I think we've been very successful in recruiting people that they don't necessarily, I mean, in our past years, the assessors who have stepped in to be elected have come without the experience. They learn that. And if we have two professionals already on the board that can help bring them along, other than just the director of assessment, who has always had the responsibility of bringing the other members of the board along, I think we're very well covered. And I can't imagine that we wouldn't find someone who would step up to fill that position. And if I'm still living, I would do it, even though I don't have that background. But I think that taking a resident that doesn't have experience and putting them on there to cover the interests of the town that knows the town, that lives with the town, and has to live with the determinations of this board is far more valuable than leaving it to chance, because I don't believe that if you get five professional assessors to apply, that the ethics law allow you to say, well, this one lives in Sherburne, so we're going to take this one. I think it needs to be part of what our bylaw is.
I did one, just one thought. I I believe that the the statute and the article are authorizing the board to appoint as opposed to hire the assessors board members. I don't actually know what legal requirements attach to appointments, but my understanding is that there's much broader discretion around appointments by the select board than there would be for hires.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, last call for the initial public comment round. All right, closing public comment and now opening advisory discussion. I guess I have a question for Drew. Well, Drew, I guess I have two questions. One would be that you know, if Nancy proposes this amendment presumably on the floor of town meeting, is this something that you would support or not the amendment itself? And if you prefer not to say right now, that's also fine. is this something that you would support or not the amendment itself? And if you prefer not to say right now, that's also fine.
Um, you know, I, I conceptually, I think it's, it's a good idea, frankly. I think that, you know, the town benefits probably from having a local, um, a local member with a voice on things like whether to grant abatement applications or, or, um, whether to grant approvals for um, special treatment under chapter sixty-one or sixty-one B. I, I like that idea. I don't know how that gets implemented in the warrant article or in the ballot. And right now that is the, the, under the current, uh, the current language in the warrant, uh, the select board has the ability to appoint a local person. Um, I have to imagine that they would be willing to at least entertain that idea, but the select board is here so they can speak to that. So I think my gut is let's not change it without having clarity about, about how it would look if it reflected that change.
Thanks. I see Amanda's already turned on your camera. I'm hoping that you are on deck, ready to respond to some of the legal questions surrounding this.
Thank you, um, Mr. Side. Uh, the, the one, uh, remark that I wanted to make is that the form of the ballot question is set by state law. So I just want to be clear that, um, you know, the, the ballot question is limited to whether you are changing the board um, from elected to appointed without more. Um, I have no, no position regarding, uh, the preferences to whether you have a resident or not. Um, I believe that you, you could do that by, by your bylaw and it's really purely a discussion for you to decide um, what's best. There is a part of me that agrees with Mr. Duransis that, um, you know, while there is broad uh, discussion for the select board to make the appointment. And, you know, quite frankly, your, your populace has, uh, so many skilled and, and civically engaged persons that I suspect that you would find someone who would be qualified.
Um, and Amanda, could you also speak, and if you have no position, that's fine, on the, the question that Drew raised about, um, an appointment versus a hiring, um, as to whether there are sort of legal guidelines as to, um, how those are done in municipal government.
Again, uh, because the appointment is at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, the selectman ha- can exercise that discretion. Um, there is, uh, you know, not even a, a, a standard for conduct there. It is not the same as a higher. But, uh, again, uh, with respect to Sherborne, there's a great deal of sophistication and a great deal of knowledge in, in the select board. And I suspect that, uh, finding an appointee would be a process that would be carefully undertaken.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna call on Marion first because she hasn't spoken. And of course Nancy, you have spoken a couple of times. So Marion, go ahead. Uh, you're muted Marion.
Sorry. Um, it's what the wording of the, uh, of the article sort of calls into question the wording of all of our articles that designate the select board as the, uh, the board, as the, the body, uh, responsible for appointment to a lot of other committees. And so there, there's what, open space, a number of others that allow the select board and thus the town, because we'll have hearings on this, to, uh, to vet a person for their, their real background experience relevant for the job, which is, I think, an important thing. And the, obviously a vote, uh, of popularity in the town doesn't necessarily do that for the town. So as far as the appointment versus election goes, I think it's, it's definitely something we should do. But the question of whether the, uh, appointee needs to be a resident or not, is that not a general question about all of our appointed committees? Uh, and I can see that, uh, in the bylaw, we could, uh, probably deal with that. Uh, in, but without putting it into the amendment, without putting it into the article, sorry.
Thank you, Marion. And I did get ahead of myself. We are actually still in the advisory discussion, uh, period. So, uh, Nancy, if I'll just ask you to wait until, uh, the second public comment. So I'd, um, like to hear any additional advisory, uh, input on this.
So Steve, can I, can I respond to just what we've heard from town council? I think I would be supportive of, um, encoding a preference, whether that's done in the bylaw or however that's done encoding a preference that, you know, at least, at least one member of the, um, uh, of the board be local. I think I have to imagine a preference would not create the issue, um, that having a binding requirement would.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, again, any additional, Amanda, I see you're back on. Do you have a response to that?
I, I wanted to, to agree that you could do that with, with a, uh, a prefer- a preference. And I think that might be, uh, a suitable accommodation for the concerns that have been expressed here.
Thank you.
Just if I could, Steve.
Yes.
We are at, on the warrant of, an amendment to the bylaw. The issue here is that we either are gonna follow a statutory procedure or not. Changing the bylaw is something for next town meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's a good clarification. Thank you, Paul. Uh, any additional, um, advisory comments?
In, in our motion, we could say something like, uh, in the word preference, the, with preference given to Sherburne residents. Can we do that in the motion or no?
Uh, I, I suspect we can do whatever we want in the motion, but I think, uh, to Paul's last point, we aren't actually changing the bylaw. We're just changing the board from being elected to appointed. Um, so I guess Paul's point would be that if you wanted to change the bylaw that governed, um, who was on the Board of Assessors, that that would be another article next year. Um, if I got that right, uh, Amanda, if you have a, a more legally accurate, uh, representation of that.
Again, I'm, I'm nodding to, to indicate that yes, I, I agree that with, uh, Mr. Duransis that that would be a, a bylaw amendment for a future town meeting. But e- expressing the preference, um, in the form of a bylaw would be the accommodation between, you know, to, to address the concerns.
Yes.
Here, it, this, the, yeah, here the advisory, um, committee is, uh, making a recommendation as to whether this is a, a, a good move to, to an appointed, uh, Board of Assessors.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right. So then with that, I would like to propose to advisory that we narrow our consideration of this, um, article to simply that move from elected to appointed and any further, um, changes to the Board of Assessors would be an amendment to the bylaw that would be brought up at a different town meeting. All right. So with that sort of legal nuance out of the way, um, any further advisory discussion? All right, I'm gonna close advisory discussion and reopen public comment. Nancy.
Um, well, I, I'd like to know if the fact that we're changing our bylaw because we're changing from elected to appointed, if we can't within that same four corners put in that, um, one of these people will be, uh, a Sherburne resident. And I, I think Paul is one who has said over and over again that we don't make bylaws and we don't make rules based around present conditions. We make them so they will withstand the test of time. So we can't always be sure that our Board of Selectmen will feel that a preference or priority should be given to a resident. I would like to see it carved in stuff, stone through the, uh, change in the bylaw. And, and I think, uh, town council could tell us whether or not, because we're changing the bylaw with this, if we can't within the four corners, add this to the language.
Amanda, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, I, I, I think that, uh, changing the bylaw to add that may be slightly beyond the scope of the warrant as it's been printed. Um, you know, of course, there, there could be discussion at, at town meeting. Um, but I think that, uh, that with the warrant, what the warrant is, is just changing the form of how the, the board is, is going to be constituted within the town.
Um, thank you. Drew, do you happen to know, uh, the makeup of the board in terms of how many members and when their terms expire? Uh, cause I believe.
Yeah, go ahead. So it's a three-member board. Um, the terms are three years each. And so they, they are staggered. When there's one expiration per year.
Okay. So effectively it is guaranteed that, um, there will be at least one member of the Board of Assessors who is a Sherburne resident for effectively, I guess, the next three years. Is that right?
I think if you go that route, if, if you go the route of replacing individual seats as, um, those terms expired, then yes.
Yeah, because you wouldn't replace, you wouldn't replace a cur- a sitting, uh, assessor until their term expired, right? You could convert them to appointed, but you wouldn't.
No, I think you could, you could also appoint somebody to sit in that seat. And then that would terminate the current, uh, the current board members.
No, I, I need to clarify that the statute provides that, that members of the board at the time that this vote is taken are, will sit, will, um, fill, fulfill their remaining term. That, that, that is within chapter forty-one, section one B.
Okay, um, so essentially that means that there would be several years to, uh, propose an amendment to the bylaw before the potential situation came to pass, that there were no, um, assessors, uh, no members of the Board of Assessors that were not Sherburne residents. Uh, Jackie, Jackie Morse.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to clarify because Amanda is correct. Um, I just wanted to clarify everybody's understanding that that is true as, as the terms um, come up, then the person would be appointed. But also if an assessor resigns before their term is finished, then the board would be appointing. So if somebody resigns, you could have appointments before the term ends. If they, if they resign before. Just want to clarify that.
Uh, Paul.
So I'm, I'm prepared to pledge that I would, uh, support a, uh, bylaw, an article at the next town meeting. And might suggest to Eric to ask the, uh, rest of the board if we would, uh, support the, that kind of action. Uh, because we're, the select board is still in session.
So you're looking all, uh, for a revote or modification of vote, uh, basically to add a preference? Is that what you're looking for?
No, to, to, to say that we will agree to put on the warrant of the next town meeting, a a warrant article to, to put before the voters the question of raised by Nancy Hess that one member, this should be a preference for one member to be a Sherburne resident.
It's essentially a bylaw. Looking for a bylaw.
Yeah, but, but next year.
Can, can we talk about this next year? I, I don't see why, like, something that came up one day, like, you want us to make a decision? Yes, we're gonna put this on the warrant next year. That doesn't make any sense.
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, yes, to, to the previous speakers. Uh, I, I do want to caution that it's, it is impermissible to bind, uh, a board to a future vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I agree, I want to keep this discussion on just, uh, this article as written. Um, so we're still on the public comment period. Paul, is that hand still just left over from before? Do you have any?
Yeah.
Um, all right, uh, still in the public comment period, any additional public comments? All right, last call for public comments. Closing the public comment and opening the advisory voting session.
I move for favorable action on article sixteen to change town, uh, Board of Assessors from elected to appointed.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion in a second. Further discussion on the motion on the floor. All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galatano. Uh, you're muted, Peter.
Hi. Hi.
Jane Matarazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickel.
Hi.
I'm also an I. Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Drew. Um, all right, on to article seventeen, amend chapter three of the general bylaws, section six, Town Administrator. Uh, is there someone from the select board who's gonna present this one?
Yeah, that's me, uh, George Wall from the select board. Um, we are proposing three changes to the town administrator, town administrator, uh, bylaw. Um, just based on some things that have happened. Number one, in section six point one, we're, uh, proposing that we give the select board a little more flexibility in the term and timing of contracts that we, that we offer to a town administrator. We want the flexibility that if we decide to give somebody a one-year trial contract, we have the right to do that. Right now, the, um, bylaws a little too restrictive that we're bound to a three-year contract at a certain date, uh, which just doesn't make sense considering things can fluctuate. And we don't want to put ourselves in a legal bind in that kind of situation. Um, this, other two changes are both very similar, just based on the budget changes that we proposed this year by adding an H R um, function and an I T function. We wanted to make the changes to the bylaw that says, you know, they're not the person in charge, they're, they're in charge of appointing somebody or hiring somebody to do those, to do those duties. Uh, we just felt like that's more current with what we're gonna be doing going forward. So since we were changing the bylaw in that other section that we would change these, make these two changes as well.
Thank you. Um, and I believe I've got all the language of that article on the screen here. Um, and the public comment period is open. Uh, Eric.
Yep. So the select board voted on March seventeenth to support this five zero.
Thank you. All right, further public comment, Corey Lincoln.
Hi, um, Corey Lincoln, ten Grape Rock Road, and I'm actually speaking as the past chairman of the Structure of Town Government Task Force. Um, two years ago, we, uh, drafted and sponsored the warrant articles that added the human resources piece and the, um, I T piece to the town administrator's job description. And it is, I infer, um, from the reading and also from George's comments, that the intent of the select board in bringing this, this further change forward is to sort of lighten the load of the town administrator and to, um, make sure that there is a qualified professional in place to execute the duties and responsibilities that are involved with both H R and I T. Um, if, if I'm correct in that, and George was shaking, he said, yes.
Yes, thank you, Cory. Brooke's saying way better than I did.
I have no problem with, with that clarif- uh, change on your part. And I suspect that the rest of the task force would agree with me in that. My concern really is that there might be an unintended consequence of the way this, uh, language falls. That we've sort of lost the thread between the town administrator and the ultimate responsibility for the I T and the H R process. That they should be in a report-to relationship with the T A and not be, um, totally independent operators. And I would suggest that after in sixty-two, six point two point E, after the word professional and also in six point two point H, after the word, um, manager, that the phrase be added, uh, quote, who shall report to the town administrator, comma, close quote, just to clarify something that we think already exists. Um, it's not changing the intent and changing the meaning. It's just making it very clear. And, um, I would ask that if the selectmen are willing to, um, endorse adding this phrase, that perhaps you'll accept a friendly amendment to do that. Um, advisory can vote on this with the understanding of the addition of the language and even incorporate it in their motion at town meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense, Corey. I think we talked about when we, when we did this, at one point, I think we had a little bit of a discussion on, do we need to? I know a lot of positions to have their own bylaw. Like, do we need to next year establish, once we have somebody like a H R director bylaw or a um, I T director. But if you can just add the language in here, that keeps it more simple. And I like that idea, other than adding bylaws, um, that it reports to the, I, I have no that it reports to the, I I have no problem with it, with that change that we have it report to the Town Administrator. I don't know about the rest of the board, if they want to comment on that, but I think that makes a lot of sense.
Does the rest of Select Board want to weigh in on that?
Just, I'll let people, hold on, I mean. I guess I'll recognize people. Mary Ann, go ahead.
Yeah, I I believe in our Select Board discussions on this, it was rather assumed that they would report to the Town Administrator. That would be the the direction of of responsibility. And I agree with Corey that it should be written into the warrant.
How about you, Jeff?
Yeah, I agree. I added on to what Marion said, though, is I think then we probably need to revote and issue advisory voting on it.
That's what I was wondering. The other thing is, um, so I always had a concern with this little modified language a little bit. I I definitely supported overall, but I concerned that it left the bylaws silent on that. So I guess having a report to it, I guess the only thing is in there, there always going to be guaranteed report direct to Town Administrator, not a layer below, which which makes sense. I'm just thinking this through. Yeah, I would support what Corey, what Corey suggested. So, um.
Paul has his hand up, Eric, please.
He's not, not doing the little, he's not, he's doing the little. Especially now that the share, now that we're sharing a screen, Paul's literally like a centimeter large in my, in my laptop.
You can resize that window, I think.
One of the options we want to keep open was that the like in other communities, the Assistant Town Administrator, because the the go-to manager of some of these functions, again, one of the problems that I see having happened in Sherburne is that we put too much work on the part of the Town Administrator, and he needs, he needed help. This, I want to leave open the option for an Assistant Town Administrator and an Assistant Town Administrator who would have responsibility for coordinating or managing the HR function or the IT function or anything like that. The Assistant Town Administrator reports to the Administrator. But it may be useful to have that sharing of the load in terms of the management of the office. So I don't want to foreclose, I don't want to read a language on the run here like this without a further more time to think about it and to to make sure that we don't foreclose the possibility of having a both the Town Administrator and an Assistant Town Administrator and the Assistant Town Administrator take on some responsibilities so the Town Administrator can actually be the Town Administrator and not get bogged down in in a lot of the paperwork that goes with the HR function.
Uh, Mary Ann, then I have a comment on Paul's name.
All right, yeah, Paul, I think there would be a simple fix for that in the language in the bylaw. When you refer to reporting to the Town Administrator, it could be report to the Town Administrator and or Assistant Town Administrator.
Yeah, or delegate, or, you know, not necessarily even identify the Assistant Town Administrator, say, or to his delegate as, you know.
Fine, that's what, that's the problem with writing bylaws on the fly in the middle of a meeting. We'd need to refine the the wording, but I'm in agreement with the the overall concept, but the devil's in the details.
And I'll just say, I'll just say that.
Oh, sorry. I think if the wording flexibility, but keeps it within the central administration of the town.
Yes.
Does it need any danger in going ahead with it?
I I agree with, I get concerned of writing it on the fly. It's just difficult to think about and look at it holistically. And I'll always say, what I said at the beginning, the number, my number one thing is that I want to pass at this town meeting is the whole three-year contract. It's not just flexibility, but there were frankly legal concerns within the last year about that language, and it really needs to go. That's all I'll say now. So as a Select Board, and within our discussion of the of the Select Board, do we have kind of a consensus, or does anyone want to make a motion to re to reconsider our vote?
I think we want to keep our vote the same. It would come down to advisory to make a change.
Okay.
They make their motion. But I would, I actually would, Eric, you're okay with it, or and Steve Si, I would have liked to hear what Corey has to add here.
Oh.
Yeah, I was waiting for a Select Board to to finish your comments before recognizing Corey. But, all right, go ahead, Corey.
Am I recognized?
You are recognized.
Yes, um, I I think it's kind of looking at this from a bottom-up reporting situation or from an authority top-down situation. And I don't think that there's anything in saying that there's a report to. I think the changes that you're making to this, it is clear that the tasks of dealing with the HR or the IT issues shall devolve to the designate, the the person who was appointed to these two positions. That is, takes the task load totally off the Town Administrator. And I think being, using the report-to phrase is to preserve the ultimate authority of the Town Administrator in what goes on in the IT and the HR execution of their jobs. I don't think you want that to stop at the the Assistant Town Administrator. I think you wanted the ultimate authority needs to go up to the Town Administrator. I don't think there's anything in my suggested language that prevents another that having the TA appoint the Assistant Town Administrator as the liaison person who receives the information from what's under them and then passes it along. I I I don't think there's anything that interferes with that. I don't think I'm changing anything in the articles. I just want to clarify with simple language and make sure the authority doesn't, of the Town Administrator, doesn't dissolve.
Thank you, Marian.
I agree with what Corey said just now, and I'd also emphasize that I think we need something on this, something clear, clear enough in the bylaw, because we're in the process of trying to hire a new Town Administrator. And the HR function as well as the IT function should be clear enough that we can explain exactly what those responsibilities will be to the candidate.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Belma, the meddling kid.
Thank you, Courtney Eck, forty-one Green Lane. I'm on committees now, but I'm not speaking on behalf of any of them. I I think this is getting overly complicated and prescriptive. The, we don't need to spell out every aspect of the Town Administrator's job in terms of you know, how they're going to manage their resources below them. I I think it is important, I agree with Corey, to say that the ultimate responsibility for this falls on the Town Administrator. So, you know, the the Town Administrator can can use an HR consultant or whatever, but ultimately the TA is responsible for what happens with them. Now, if the TA wants to make the Assistant TA take any of those duties and delegate them to them, we don't need to write that. We don't need to write that in the in the bylaw. Like, that's, that's just assumed. The TA is the boss.
I think our G A felt they, he he couldn't.
Thank you, Eric.
I just, um, further what Courtney meddling kid, what Courtney there said. And I've said this at the hearings, or the items that we've had discussions on this. Ultimately, whether subcontracted out or was delegated, you know, it's still all going to fall on the Town Administrator. There might be issues with the Town Administrator, for example, has trouble keeping up with performance reviews or or reviews, the administrative side of 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 the HR duties, but ultimately, you know, no one's going to want to get, you know, a bad, a dispar, a dispar reaction from a subcontractor, and it's going to ultimately fall into them. So I'm fine with if if this says reports to, or, you know, they can delegate or whatever else it is. I'm even fine, frankly, if you actually assign it to the Town Administrator and then say unless delegated, to be honest. I think that either one of those is is fine by me, and I agree fully with Courtney, no matter what, it's gonna, the buck's gonna stop there.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, last call for public comment.
I just, one comment that I I can agree with wording that says response that the HR function will report to the Town Administrator. But I also want to have the word in there, or as delegate, delegate T. Because we've had, we had the, we've just got, we've, we've, we had had experience with the bylaw. And we're trying to amend this bylaw to reflect our experience. And we want to be able to ha- have that load shared and not all be in one place. So there should be some wording in there that makes the playing that there is the ability for the TA to ask someone to handle this reporting to him or her, but keeping some reference to not have to do it himself. Or her.
Thanks, Corey.
Since Paul had raised the issue of the person who formerly held the TA position, when we worked in our task force, we tried not to discuss anything in the in the context of what current occupants of various offices would do. However, I do have to say that when we brought, first brought this out and presented it at a selectmen's meeting, Paul may recall that the Town Administrator reacted rather negatively to it in the meeting. And I actually made an appointment and went in and talked to him about it. And I feel that, to some degree, he misunderstood the the changes because we said in the original language that in both cases, HR and IT, that the Town Administrator had the discretion to assign those responsibilities to a designate. And it was a choice situation that he may assign those responsibilities. And this change of the selectmen is turning the may into a shall assign, which I think the previous TA perhaps felt that for reasons of looking competent or whatever, that he felt disinclined to assign this, those duties to a designate. But I think this makes it very clear that he, that whoever the Town Administrator is, has to assign those tasks to a designate. And that one of the things that the Town Administrator could do is assign another designate to receive the reports, the Assistant Town Administrator. So I think, you know, past experience enlightens us, yes, in part, but in part maybe not.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm I'm now coming away feeling like what we said earlier applies. I I sort of don't feel comfortable voting for this because we have some language here that we have some concerns about, and we have some proposed potential revisions that we haven't really seen in hard print. I don't, I sort of feel like we should get this language right before we make it you know, a vote on this. So I I actually would, my report from my perspective is to take no action on this now and to rework the language so that we can really think it through. We're trying to do this in a hurry and, as Paul said, do it on the fly and I'm not feeling comfortable that we wouldn't have to revise it again next year.
Jeff, I I worry that if we just throw the whole thing out, six point one's an important piece that needs to be taken care of before we
I hear what you're saying, and I hear what Marion said about a new Town Administrator wanting to know this, but it's.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's that. I think we're missing the reports to, but it's kind of, I think that's kind of what Courtney was saying, like we don't need to overthink this thing. I think the way we have it written is fine, and if we want to go in and change, add the word reports to next year, let's adopt this and then maybe add that later. I don't, I don't think we need to throw the whole thing out because potentially misunderstood word, not in there.
If we just want to vote on six one, but I think we've kind of muddled six two.
Look, can I suggest, I I agree with George, that we we voted to support this particular document. Let's encourage advisory to to support this particular article. And then between now and town meeting, let's have the board work with council and see if we can't come up with something that might address the concerns being raised by Corey and circulated and and presented to advisory and everything else. So when we get to town meeting, we may we may have a word or two, but I wouldn't want to take no action now on this because there are provisions in here like the the three-year contract provision that really needs to be fixed and should be fixed now and not not be put off. So I would say, let's, let's stay the course. Let's work on this language piece and have that ready later. Rather than trying to.
I've got Eric and then Nancy and then Jackie.
So just as a Select Board Chair, I recommend exactly what was suggested, that we're just going to stick to our previous vote. However, if during your discussion, you change a word or change something in it, then I'm going to open up to consideration of revote at that point. And now, I'm going to put my hand down, I'm going to open up as a citizen to recommend change language.
All right, wait, so Eric, are you, are you going to make a recommendation for change language right now?
It's just recommendation of change language. I think it's a simple, gives us flexibility. Just simply add, serve as or, so the Town Administrator shall serve as or appoint a qualified human resource appointment. H, the Town Administrator shall serve as or appoint an information technology manager, da, 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 da. That's it. All all bases are covered, all are done. If we find someone that's a great qualified person and fine, we can do that, you know, and wants to do it, gives us flexibility and doesn't lock us into any kind of shells and any any direction. So that's all I'm asking is add three words to each E and H.
Okay, Nancy and then Jackie.
I I think that you you should take a little more time on this because the way you had it before, you required a a professional to be appointed a qualified human resource professional, which I think is more and more important with every day that passes. The HR function is such a complex thing now that you don't want to just have that delegated to somebody or tack it on to the Town Administrator as a casual appointment. There are just so many things in the human resource thing now. And and I'm not speaking for personnel, although I am part of personnel, it becomes very clear that this is something, I think you should leave the, I I think it was pretty clear that the Town Administrator shall appoint a qualified human resource professional. And if you want to add that they report to the Town Administrator or his designate, that's fine, but I would not put in the bylaw here that the Town Administrator will automatically serve as the Human Resource Director. I think you need to have somebody professional that you can rely on for human resource questions, things that go beyond the the Personnel Committee. Just my, just my opinion.
I'd like to recognize Jackie first. Sorry, Paul, Jack is ahead of you in line.
Yeah, hi, thank you very much. I just, I guess I just want to confirm with Amanda or Paul that can't you guys, you guys, the Select Board is meeting before the, before town meeting. So they could, you guys could choose to write, rewrite the language and then can't you just submit an amendment on the floor? At town meeting? That seems to be, instead of talking over this as long as we have, just let the Select Board meet before town meeting and then bring the, bring the new motion to the floor and have have everyone vote. And have, have everyone vote on it at town meeting. That seems, I just want to make sure that my thinking is, is correct. If Paul or Amanda want to address that.
Um, thank you. I'm gonna start flexing my power as the chair here and I generally agree with Jackie. I just want to point out that this is exactly the reason why I really do not like it when uh, an article is presented to the advisory committee for the very first time at the public hearing. This is exactly what happens. This is not ready for prime time. Obviously, the board that is putting it forward can't agree with itself. And uh, we just don't have the time to, to deal, to, to deal with this today. And I really, I don't think that we have the time to deal with it at town meeting either, unless everyone here is willing to go to a second day on town meeting. Uh, my inclination, and I realize that we are still in the public comment period and it's still gonna be open after my comment, but my inclination is going to be, um, that advisory recommend, um, striking six point two from this article and keep it as just six point one. Because everybody seems to agree on six point one and nobody seems to agree on six point two. And I don't want this public hearing to be the, uh, drafting of this bylaw and, um, a long protracted discussion, um, of wordsmithing. Um, I want to just strike it. If the select board chooses to try to come up with something that they want to bring to the floor of town meeting, they can. I would recommend that you not do that because then we're just gonna be doing this on the floor of town meeting. Six point one is the part that everybody wants to keep in right now. Let's keep that in, strike six point two and deal with that. Get it ready for prime time next year. That's going to be my recommendation. Alright, go ahead. Public comment is still open. Sorry, we have three hands up and I'm not sure which ones are leftover. I've got Jeff and then Paul and then Eric. So if you don't
Yeah, I'm still up.
Alright, go ahead, Paul.
So we're in the process of hiring a town administrator and it's a very tight market and many communities are out looking for town administrators at the same time. And so we're in competition with other communities. And one of the things that a number of town administrators have told me is that they buy to a community that requires them to be the town administrator. And I'm afraid the language that's currently there in six point two, where it says the town administrator shall be the human resource director is, is not good, not the best language that we could have at this point in time where we're out searching. It's better to be silent than to turn off some, some potential candidates. I'm very worried that we won't get many candidates applying. There are just too many communities out there. Someone mentioned the figure of thirty-one communities looking for town administrators right now. I don't know if that's accurate or not. But we're essentially in competition with a lot of other people. And the way the language is in there based on information from town administrators is that that will not help us in our search. The way it's proposed by the board will help us. So I would stick with what the board has proposed and ask you to support it. But in the meantime, let's have the board work on it. And so we may have a tweak in it along the lines that Erica suggested. We just need to work on it. We need to see the language and so on. So I, I would say I would urge advisory to take favorable action on this now. And we still have between now and April twenty-sixth for the select board to perfect this. And hopefully we can do it within a week. We may even be able to get it done before you've, you've issued your report.
Thank you, Eric and then George. And I just ask if you are simply agreeing with Paul. That's, that's fine. Just try to keep your comments brief.
I'm just gonna clarify comment to actually, you said Stephen, is that the, the board does not seem to agree upon itself. We had an ample discussion. We had a discussion to actually try to concern, try to, um, address concerns that were, uh, that were mentioned during the discussion itself. But nonetheless, the vote is still five oh to support as, as, as recommended to advisory. And none of the board members have yet to actually move to actually reconsider that vote. So until a board member moves to reconsider that vote, the vote is still five oh for section six point one and six point two. And the board still votes five oh and to support this language. So we're still on board with that. I, I made a comment, I'll be my comments to hopefully try to abate concerns and maybe perfect something, but this is what we've considered for several weeks now and voted on.
Thank you. Cory.
Um, I, I just wanted to say that if the board was going to go ahead and consider Eric's offhand suggestion about changes in language, that does not address my concern. My, my concern is that the threat of authority is muddled by it. It sort of implies that if you give someone else other than the DA, the official title, that the authority goes with the title. I have no problem with this as it is drafted as, as being approved, no problem. But if you're going to consider additional language like Eric suggested, I would also hope that you would consider the concern that I have suggested, which is to make the authority clear.
Thank you. Alright, further public comment? Paul.
I, I, I've made my comment, but I would, I would say, again, I think Eric and, and Cory just said it perfectly. Let's adopt this because it's better than what we had. And we're gonna continue to work on it.
Alright, thank you. Alright, last call for public comment. Alright, I'm closing the initial public comment and opening advisory discussion. So, um, as I, as I said earlier, it's, it's incredibly frustrating for advisory to have to be viewing this for the first time. It's one thing if everything is obviously cut and dry, um, and it's a bush through, but this obviously has taken up a lot of time. What I'm, what I'm hearing is that, uh, everybody, including the people who have raised concerns, would agree that the drafted language is better than the existing language. And my inclination is to say then, um, great, unless people from advisory have major reservations about the language as drafted, uh, I would, I would suggest then that we approve it as is. And then suggest that Cory and anybody else who is involved, uh, meet with the select board at their next meeting and draft this all out, any kind of changes that you would want. And, uh, I guess make sure that you have a unified, um, amendment for the floor of town meeting. Because, uh, you know, I don't think that if, if we don't, if we don't know what your draft amendment is going to be, I don't think that advisory can today make a motion to approve it and we're not gonna meet again, um, before we write our advisory report. So, um, so that's kind of, that's kind of where my head is at. Um, but I, I would like to hear from other advisory members what you think.
I, I just have a question. Is the candidate who comes in when he appoints these functions, is it to existing staff? Or does he get to hire new personnel to fulfill these functions?
Part of the budget this year, Peter. Part of this is also predicated on what we did with the budget that we added hours for HR and we added hours for IT. So essentially, we're looking for them to hire. Hire somebody as an HR and IT. To handle those functions, to take, as Cory said, to take more off the TA's plate so they can focus on being the TA.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question about whether the current language makes it clear, or, or maybe another way to phrase it is, is, is the search committee for the TA, what are they going to say or feel confident saying to candidates about what their job is with respect to HR and IT? So if there are any members of the search committee who may be on this call, you know, is, is there any concern that this language is too vague to be able to properly inform candidates for the job as to what their role is gonna be? Because if, if that is the case, if there's a, a any, you know, vagueness about that, I think that's a serious concern.
So I'm on the search committee and my answer is that this, I believe will help the search. And one of the reasons why it's coming forward now and I'm asking for it to be approved by advisory now is that this amendment will help the recruitment process.
Thank you. Any other advisory discussion? What seems to happen, Wassim, is that the first several seconds of whatever you're saying are silent and then you come in. So maybe just recite some poetry for five seconds before your comments.
Okay, well, this happened maybe because I just had a recent update to the computer, uh, so, but for some reason it resolves itself. So hopefully by now, the non, uh, you, you know, I already said stuff, so now I'll, I'll get to my question. It's not clear to me what the intent here is because the original language says that the town administrator should, shall be the town's human resources director, a director. And later on, it says and may delegate. So it sounds like in six two C, the town administrator has the option to delegate. Similarly, six two H, the town administrator also mentions the town administrator or the town administrator's designate. So it sounds like in that also, there is the option for the town administrator to designate, to, to offload some of those activities. So if the intent is to give the town administrator the option to offload some of those activities, it seems to me like the existing language already offers that. So what are we really to provide the town administrator with the option? Or is it to force the town administrator to, 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 to delegate those functions? That, that was, the intent was not clear to me throughout all of this discussion.
Great point, Wassim. I agree.
George, can you answer that?
Yeah, I think it's, it's to, to, to mandate that he appoints it because before he has the option and so a town administrator could have too much on his plate. Now we're saying he will appoint an HR director and he will appoint an IT director. So that it, it takes, it takes it off his plate. Like, we know that he's going to do those and he's not gonna keep those as his own responsibility, he or her, I should say.
So it eliminates the possibility that the town administrator, um, is the HR director and the IT director.
Correct.
Dan.
I just briefly, I just wanted to say I support Steve's suggestion of, uh, and I'd support the idea of advisory approving this as proposed with the understanding that the select board will get with, uh, the appropriate folks in the next short bit of time to, to work out any language to propose as an amendment. So I'm on board with that.
This is Mark. I agree, same thing.
Um, alright, any additional advisory discussion? Um, alright, so before I go to public comment again, then I guess it would seem that advisory's, uh, general consensus is to approve this as is, not writing any, um, alterations into our motion, um, with the understanding that, um, you know, essentially this language is better than the existing language according to all parties involved. But that it could be improved and that in the coming weeks, uh, select board and any other interested parties may work on improving that language, uh, with an eye to proposing an amendment on the floor of town meeting. Does that sound accurate?
Yes.
Alright, uh, now I'd like to reopen the public comment. Alright, last call for public comment. Alright, closing public comment and opening the advisory voting session.
I move for favorable action on this article.
A second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any further comment relative to this motion? Alright, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wassim Basali. Brendan Daly. Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Steve Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Materazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
I'm also an I. The motion carries eight zero. Alright, on to article eighteen. To amend chapter three of the general bylaw, section fourteen, finance slash accountant. Um, George, you're gonna present this one as well?
This is me as well. Um, this is a simple change to the eighteen. I mean, it's simple, but it's a, it's a very important change that we think the finance director accountant, which we will also be looking to hire a full-time person this year, should have a direct report to somebody who works in town hall every day. Currently, I, I look at it on a private basis, sometimes that in a ma- in major companies, most CFOs report to a COO, not the board of directors. The CFO, I, I think a finance director accountant needs to have day-to-day supervision. We need somebody, the person who's going to perform their, uh, performance evaluations, needs to see their work on a day-to-day basis. The select board's a volunteer board that meets every other week. To have them have, other than the town administrator as direct reports, doesn't make a lot of sense. And the, the line that we added at first, when we were discussing this, there was some disagreement about that. But to compromise, we added the last line that says the finance director accountant shall have direct access to the select board to consult on the financial operations of the town. This means that the select board can still have direct, um, access with them if they want to discuss for the financial issues. And it's similar to what we have with the police chief, the fire chief, the DPW director. They currently report to the town administrator, but they also come directly to the select board for, for many items. So that is why I'm proposing that we change this by law. So the town admin, so we set up the new finance director accountant for success. We've had some trouble with some past issues with the way the reporting was done and we think this will help somebody be successful in their new position. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Eric, did the select board vote on this?
Yep, the select board voted. That's five zero. I think it was, uh, three seventeen, yep, three seventeen to support this article.
Thank you. Uh, public comment period is open on article eighteen. Last call for public comments. Closing public comment, uh, opening advisory discussion on article eighteen. Um, I do have one question, which is just currently, are there any town employees other than the town administrator and the finance director, which report directly to the select board?
No, not that I believe. I think the town administrator is the, is the only one.
Okay.
Currently.
Right, right. So after this move, the town administrator would be the only town employee that reports directly to this select board?
Correct. The only other, the only other, there are a few other town employees that report directly to boards, just, just to point it out. I mean, I think the, the assessor reports to the board of assessors, the, um, conservation agent reports to the conservation committee, you know, the board of health agent, that kind of thing. But, uh, so there are some other people who report to boards, but this would be the only one for the select board.
Thank you. And I believe
Can I correct, though, I think, I think the treasurer is going from elected to appointed, but I'm not sure who the treasurer reports to. Is they were, they weren't reporting to anyone because they were elected.
Not sure. That's a good question.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's clear. I think the treasurer maybe should report to the select board then in that instance, but we're not really addressing that in this article, but
But let's stay on, let's stay on focus so we can let Steve continue to move this.
No, no, I understand, but I, we need to put it on our list. That's
Yeah, something to think about.
Sounds like a future town meeting article. Uh, Marion.
As I recall from our select board discussions, the intent was to keep the door open for the finance direct, correct access to the select board if needed. It wasn't a matter of regular, direct, daily reporting. It was just an open door to take issues to the select board as needed. And I think that's true of other town employees, including the treasurer.
Thank you. Um, alright, we're still in the advisory discussion phase. Any advisory discussion here?
Makes sense to me to have the, um, to have this person reporting into the, um, town administrator as well, just like as George mentioned.
Thank you. Any other advisory comment? All right, closing advisory discussion and reopening reopening public comment.
Jeff, I think you left your hand up again.
All right, last call for public comment. All right, closing public comment and opening the advisory voting session. I will welcome any motions from advisory.
I move favorable action on this article.
Nice second.
All right, any discussions relative to the motion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
I.
Wassim Basali.
Hi.
Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Steve Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Matarazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
I'm also an I. Motion carries eight zero. All right, let's move on to Article nineteen, amend Personnel Administration Plan to Include Juneteenth Holiday. I believe Vicky Relis, are you here for this one?
I am. Good morning or good afternoon, everyone. Vicky Relis, Vice Chair of Personnel Committee. Article nineteen accepts Juneteenth on our personnel plan as a holiday, a national holiday. And just so that everybody knows, it was voted on as in the bill by President Biden last June. So we just incorporated that into our existing personnel bylaw, a personnel bylaw as a as a national holiday.
Thank you. Any public comments on this?
Yeah, the select board voted, I believe, is February tenth to four zero to support this article. February twelfth, every twelve.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Last call for public comments. All right, closing public comments and opening advisory discussion. Any advisory discussions? Right here and none, I'm closing advisory discussion and reopening public comment. Last call for public comments. Closing public comments and opening the advisory voting session. I will take any motions relative to Article nineteen.
Move favorable action on Article nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? I'll take a roll call vote then. Mark Albers. Mark.
Hi.
Hi.
Wassim Basali. Brendan Daly. Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Steve Leahy. Did we lose Steve? All right, Jane Matarazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
Steven Tsai, this is me. I'm an I. All right, last last chance, Steve Leahy, or else you're going to be an abstain. All right, Steve Leahy abstains. Motion passes seven zero one. All right, Article twenty, amend Personnel Administration Plan Appendix A. Go ahead, Vicky.
Hi, yes, that's another Personnel Board change. Basically, what we're doing is two things. We are changing the phrase as amended from time to time by the Personnel Board and replacing it with as amended from time to time by the town administrator with consent of the Personnel Board. So if you look at H, it also says job classification plan. Show me an Appendix A, which all of you received at the last meeting to this plan as amended from time to time by the town administrator with consent of the Personnel Board. So basically, what's happened is instead of the Personnel Board, we always have to consent to some changes. So what we're saying now is the town administrator can make a change and they still have to consent, have consent of the Personnel Board. So that is not being in taken out of this. It's just a matter of the town administrator can have the option of doing something and come to the Personnel Board and asking for that to be done.
Thank you. Eric?
Yep, thank you. Select board voted on, um, which one am I add here? On February twenty fourth, four zero to support this.
Thank you. Comment period is open for Article twenty. Last call for public comments. Closing public comment and opening advisory discussion.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so is should this be the town administrator? This should this say the human resources?
I it just town administrator because the town administrator is the last person in the hierarchy to be able to do this. I think HR person would come to the town administrator saying that they propose a change. And if that's the case, then that that town administrator would come to the Personnel Board. So it doesn't eliminate HR from doing anything. It just is the town administrator would be the one that would be presenting it versus HR presenting it because the way it works now. You know, department head would come or you something like that. So it just goes through the TA right at this point.
George, do you have more to add?
Yeah, just on on that, too. I was just going to add to what Vicky said that we haven't, the change hasn't officially been made yet, like we proposed in the bylaws. So right now, the town administrator still is in charge, like is in charge of all the HR functions. So I wouldn't make that change. Yeah, and could be something down the road if they decide to change, but I would leave it as a town administrator for now.
Thank you. Further advisory discussion? Closing advisory discussion, reopening public comment. Last call for public comment. All right, closing public comment and opening the advisory voting session.
I move for favorable action on this article.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? Then I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wassim Basali. Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Steve Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Matarazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
I'm also an I. Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Vicky. All right, on to Article twenty one, the Sherburne Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw. And is Edimi Weiss, are you here to present?
I am here. Hopefully you guys can hear me okay. So hopefully this is pretty quick. Housekeeping, it's a matter of changing in having mine to what we submit and recorded with the state as our declaration of fast making that Chapter thirty one Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw to be the same language because we learned after the fact that a investment standard using prudent investor standard did not allowed for municipal trust. So the way the draft warrant is written at the moment is good. Unfortunately, just looking at my draft printout, there's still one missing set of quotes on the in the first explanation paragraph, which hopefully we can catch and add before the final version is printed. The warrant is changing Section four point one. The word using prudent investor standards and replacing that language with the word taking account of safety, liquidity, and yield. All officers who control the investment of such funds shall invest them in accordance with MGL's Chapter forty four, Section fifty four. Such as that bylaw shall read, yeah, that's it, sir. Can't read my own quote.
All right, thank you. Eric, did select board vote on this?
Yep, the select board voted on March tenth to support this five zero.
Thank you. All right, public comments on Article twenty one. Last call for public comments. Closing public comments and opening the advisory discussion. Any advisory discussions on Article twenty one? All right, hearing none, closing advisory discussion and reopening public comments. Last call for public comment. Closing public comment, opening the advisory voting session.
I move favorable action on Article twenty one.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wassim Basali. Brendan Daly. Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Steve Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Matarazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
I'm also an I. Motion carries eight zero. All right, on to Article twenty two, Flood Plain District. We have either Gino or Chris Owen here, or I see actually.
Yeah, hi, this is Will Dunham, member of the planning board. I'm going to give a, this is another sort of housekeeping item, I'm going to give a little bit of background quickly. So FEMA manages National Flood Insurance Program that makes flood insurance available to homeowners in qualifying communities because homeowners insurance does not typically cover flood damage. In order to qualify to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, a community must adopt minimum flood plain management standards. The purpose of those standards is to make sure that participating communities take flood hazards into account when governing land management and use. Sherburne has first adopted a floodplain district zoning bylaw in nineteen seventy, has updated the bylaw periodically as FEMA has updated qualifying standards. We did this most recently in two thousand fourteen. FEMA has recently, once again, updated the qualifying standards. And so Article twenty two here would update the floodplain district zoning bylaw to comply with the requirements of new standards. If we don't do that, we would result, the result would be us in Sherburne losing the ability to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So this is again, just sort of a quick set of cleanup changes to bring our zoning bylaw into compliance with the FEMA standards and allow us to continue participating in the National Flood Insurance Program.
Thank you. Eric, did the select board vote on this?
Yep, on March tenth, voted five oh in favor.
Thank you. Opening public comment session on Article twenty two. Last call for public comments. All right, closing public comment and opening advisory discussion. Jane?
Thanks, Steve. So so I'm, you know, in favor generally of of getting this adopted, but I have a question for council. Have you had a chance to review the entire text of this bylaw review and approve the entire text of this bylaw?
Of the flood floodplain that you're discussing right now?
Yes.
No, that was not one that I was asked to review.
Okay, so then, um, I think I think it is important since we're making a major change to our bylaw here that this be reviewed by council. So I guess I would make a suggestion, Steve, if it's okay with you, when it comes time for the motion, if we're all agreed that we conceptually, you know, want to have this pass, that we have our motion be contingent upon review and approval of the text of the bylaw by town council.
Yes. Do you, Jane, do you just want to briefly characterize some of the concerns that you've identified in the language?
Um, sure, I'm happy to do that. I mean, the the I had one major concern, which was that a bunch of new definitions have been adopted, and I understand that it's required that those definitions be adopted, but it did not appear to me, and I, you know, I did not go over this with a fine tooth comb, but it did not appear to me that those definitions had then been incorporated into the text of the bylaw. So we were still using the old terms in the text of the bylaw, even though we were adopting the new definition, which, you know, creates a question about how you interpret the whole bylaw. In my opinion, obviously, I'm not counsel for the town. I am a lawyer, but that's why, Amanda, I think it's important that you take a look at this and just do whatever drafting.
Yeah, you know, I I understand, you know, the 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 benefit of the text that was provided is it makes specific reference to the Code of Federal Regulations. So I'll I'll talk with the the drafter and perhaps just making a reference statement somewhere at the at the outset of this amendment that for the purposes of this section, the definitions will be those found in the CFR.
You, Amanda, I think the the key is that we just want to make sure that this article as written will essentially accomplish its purpose, which is to ensure that all the residents that are in the floodplain district will still be eligible for their for their insurance. All right, I see, wait. I see Chris's hand is up if you want to address this concern. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I had assumed and I had asked Eric earlier, I didn't know if any bylaws changes automatically went to town council. We had not realized that they had not. The language that we used came directly from FEMA and the state. We did not have any definitions before, so all the the twenty definitions were plugged right in as specifically required by them. So and I'm not opposed to having it reviewed.
Thank you. Eric, do you have some comments on this topic as well?
I just, I actually, I thought I'd been reviewed with council, and that's on me on that. However, I do want to say that I thought this is a boilplate every single year, that we see this every two or three years, and it's an update. I see it in the community I work for on a routine basis. So I didn't know if there are any actually significant changes in this one, but I'll have them review it.
Thank you.
I could back to that.
Yes, Paul, go ahead.
There are significant changes in here. This is part of a federal program by which the former administration felt that the states were hosing the federal government. Things like wildfires in California and the damage to Puerto Rico. So they rewrote the programs to make it much harder to get an insurance recovery. So there's a lot of substantive changes here. Some would say that they're decades overdue. Some would say that they are draconian, but they are made to change. The second point I would make is that this form of language comes to us as mandatory. In other words, the bylaw has already been written and has been delivered to the different communities. All the communities are facing the same language. I was able in another community to make a few changes, but that took a huge ordeal. Took months of negotiations. It, you have to involve all kinds of of political figures to get any change made. If at the end of the day, we're going to have whatever council says about the particular language here, at the end of the day, this is basically what we have to do. We have a choice.
Thanks. All right, we're still in the advisory discussion period. Any other comments from advisory? Jane, is your hand up again, or is it just?
Yeah, just to just to follow up. I mean, Paul, to your point, if there is a my concerns were mostly because there seemed to be, you know, two different sets of definitions and terms being used. So if there is a a form of bylaw that's completely conforms to what the requirements are, you know, from FEMA, maybe it would be easier to just use that. Maybe it would be easier to just use that. I, I don't know. Just a thought, but.
That's what this is. That's what FEMA is, FEMA has, instead of state, the state has put this thing together. Forget the office, which office put it together and said, look, those communities who are having floodplain changes to their maps, you have to adopt this as part of your changes to your maps. If we're not changing, perhaps we can put it off for a year, but if we're changing the maps, you go to adopt it.
I think, I think ultimately, I, I think ultimately the request stands that we would like town council to review the language of this, um, bylaw. And I think that advisory's motion will likely be approval, um, contingent on, uh, approval by town council. Alright, any further advisory discussion? Alright, closing the advisory discussion period, reopening public comment. Last call for public comment. Alright, closing the public comment period and opening the advisory voting session.
I move favorable action on this, uh, subject to review and approval of the specific text of the bylaw by town council.
Alright, I've got a motion and a second. Uh, any advisory discussion relative to the motion? Alright, um, gonna take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Aye.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly. Peter Galatana.
Aye.
Uh, there's a, there's an echo here somewhere, so if anybody has their. Um, if they're, if you're unmuted, can you just please mute unless you're on advisory? Uh, Steve Leahy.
Aye.
Jane Marrazo.
Aye.
Dan Sickle.
Aye.
And I'm also an I. Motion carries eight zero. Alright, on to Article twenty three. To authorize select board to file home rule petition messages at Bay Transit Authority District. And if someone from the select board are gonna present this one?
I think this was from Paul. Yep, go Paul.
Okay, I'm gonna say a few words and then I'm gonna ask Gino to give you, Gina Carlucci to give you the details. He's got a slideshow if you want to sit through that. Uh, essentially, a new state law was enacted amending the zoning act. The change requires all communities that are called MBTA communities. Have got to adopt multi-family zoning. Where multi-family housing consisting of three units per house or multiple houses on the lot. Can be built as a right. It has to be family friendly, so there can't be any caps on, on, uh, children. Can't be elderly housing and it's none of that. And for Sherburne, it has to be fifty acres. So, so the state law was passed and then regulations are being written to implement. And then the regulations that are proposed soon to become final. Sherburne has to create a zoning district of fifty acres. And has to allow for housing of seven hundred and fifty housing units. Which would be an estimated increase in our population of two thousand three hundred and fifty people. And this is part of a statewide program to produce three hundred and thirty four.
Your audio seems to have cut out. Nope, sorry, it's my fault.
It's part of a state program to produce three hundred and thirty four thousand new housing units that they figure is necessary. This is such a change in the character of the community. We have currently fifteen hundred houses in town. This would add seven hundred and fifty. It's like a fifty percent increase in the housing stock in town. And as I say, would represent about a fifty percent increase in the population of the town. So the purpose of this article is to get us out from this requirement, is to authorize the select board to have this ability. We're hoping that other communities or that the rulemaking authorities do not proceed on the course that they're on, and so that we never have to file this home rule petition. But we need to have it in our, in our quiver. It's another arrow in our, in our quiver. Or another tool in our toolbox, whatever analogy works best, that we can use to try and figure out a way to, to, uh, mitigate, soften, or avoid this total change in the character of Sherburne. If I could turn it over to Gina to give you the details.
It's okay, I'll, I just have like five or six slides that include the details. Okay, as, as Paul had explained, this was from, there was a new section three A of chapter forty A that requires the multi-family housing by right. The intent is that it be within a half mile of transit stations. Uh, and that's what, this is what the law says, minimum density of fifteen units per acre. Uh, can you hear me? Am I muted? I didn't think so.
Nope, go ahead, Gino.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, and then the law requires DHCD to promulgate guidelines, and that's what Paul was talking about. The guidelines have come out. So the guidelines say they interpret the term reasonable size that's in the law to be fifty acres. And, um, so that fifty acres times fifteen units per acre is what, is how they calculated the figure of seven hundred and fifty units. They also have a second measure, which is ten percent of the existing housing stock. However, the, the requirement under the draft guidelines is to meet both of these. So in other words, if you have more than seventy five hundred units, then you have to create more. But if you're under seventy five hundred, you still have to create seven fifty. Not create, zone for. That's, that's a term that they, you know, emphasize that there's no requirement to build anything. It's just zoning. Um, and yes, and they also kind of added that if there's no transit station, then this district must be near, uh, the, the actual term they use is a, a location that complies with the state's sustainable development principles, which essentially means near a town center. The district can be split, but one area has to be at least twenty five contiguous acres and no smaller area can be less than five. Uh, if you do not comply with this requirement, the town becomes ineligible for, uh, at least the housing choice initiative. And that, we did get a housing choice grant, uh, that helped pay for the North Main Street sidewalk. The new, the new sidewalk, the local capital projects funds and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, possibly others at the discretion of DHCD. There is a provision for interim compliance, uh, which, which needs to be done by May second. And the, the steps that have to be taken for that is to make a presentation about these guidelines to the select board, which has already been done. That's what this slide show is from. Uh, we have to submit updated parcel maps to Mass GIS. And that's also in process, in progress with the assessor's office. And we have to complete and submit an MBTA community information form to DHCD. That hasn't been done yet, but that's a form that's, it's, it's, it's not a big complicated form. It's just, it's just to submit some information about the town essentially, whether you need technical assistance to help comply with this, that sort of thing. Uh, so this is a more complete list of the, of the timelines. So after May second, well, actually, the first deadline is March thirty first, which is the public comment period. And we've already submitted, uh, comments to DHCD outlining, uh, the problems with this for us and, and others. May second, as previously said, is the, that community information form has to be submitted in the, in the, uh, presentation to the select board. By the end of the year, uh, we're supposed to submit an action plan to, uh, outline how we plan to comply. And then DHCD has until July of next year to approve that plan. And then, uh, communities with subway and bus, major bus facilities must adopt their zoning amendment by December thirty first of next year, twenty twenty three. Adjacent communities and commuter rail communities such as Sher- Sherburne, which is an adjacent community, uh, is required to adopt it by twenty twenty four. Um, and one of our comments was that at a minimum, the December thirty first, twenty twenty four deadline should be extended to at least June, since most towns have their meetings in, in, uh, the spring. And that's it. That's the outline.
Thank you. Um, Eric, did select board vote on this?
Uh, yes, they did. On, uh, March tenth this year, um, they support, devoted support five zero.
Thank you. Alright, opening the public comment period. Last call for public comments. Closing public comments, uh, opening the, uh, alright, I guess, uh, Marion, you, you hopped in right before, I guess. Uh, and you're muted. Marion, you're muted.
Uh, just to expand a tiny bit on what, uh, Gino said, uh, the, the law has passed, but they're still revising the guidelines. Uh, and the guidelines are just exactly as Gino said. Uh, but, uh, it should be noted that the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, who represents the interests of all of these communities in the, um, so-called MBTA area. Uh, has submitted a detailed analysis criticizing the guidelines that, uh, the state wants towns to follow and covering some of the, uh, same concerns that Sherburne has. That is, there are some communities, uh, for which this simply does not work. And, uh, we'll see what happens. It's not going to go away. So we definitely need this, uh, this backup plan, if you like, to opt out of this. And I think we need to consider how much, if we did have to comply with this, how much it would cost the town. The, the hidden costs in this are tremendous. So we would lose, uh, opportunity for grants. But, uh, there's a cost benefit analysis that we would have to do.
Thank you, Gino.
Uh, just to add to what Marion just said, besides M, MB, MAPC, uh, most other towns naturally have many of this, of similar concerns and they're commenting as well. And, uh, I have a high level of confidence that the guidelines are going to be changed. To what level, we, we don't know. Nobody knows at this point yet, but, um, I'm sure they're going to be lessened from what they are currently. But we'll have to wait and see what they turn out to be.
Thank you. Um, alright, so I had closed the public comment period, so I'd like to open, uh, advisory discussion. Any advisory questions?
Uh, I have a question for me, Steve. So for Paul and Gino, how long do we think this will take to influence? Is this a very long process?
Uh, Paul, you're muted.
What, what was the question?
Uh, how long does this process take for you to file the petition and then get to pay a ruling, if that's right, from, um, the Transit Authority District?
So the typical course for a home rule petition is like a year to a year and a half. So if we filed it now, we'd be looking at sometime next year before we could get exempt. So we're going to be having to comply in the short term.
Thank you.
Jane.
By opting out of the MBTA, uh, district, are there other consequences besides loss of grants? So does that have any transportation implications with the, you know, the ride systems we have here in town for the elderly or anything like that?
Yeah, so I have a long statement about that, if you want to hear it. I suppose you asked it, so I'll try and do it. Sure, it's.
Keep it brief?
Two minutes. Two minutes, Paul, two minutes.
We want to get out of the MBTA district and have been trying to do so for, uh, fifteen years at least, because we're classified as a no service district. Yet we have to pay an annual assessment to the MBTA. Plus, we have to duplicate at our own expense the services that the MBTA provides to their service communities. So many years ago, for example, we realized that, we, the select board realized that, that seniors in town had no trans, transport, no means to get around. And so we went to the MBTA and asked them to institute the ride program. The ride program is what they provide to service communities where they have a van and they have an MBTA paid driver. Then they pick up people and bring them to different destinations. And the answer was no. And they, they told us we had to do this on our own. So we had to create an alternate arrangement. We found this JFK transport. We set it up for the council on aging. We, all the work, all the expenses, all of this without any state MBTA funding, even though we're paying the assessment. So after we set that up and that started to, to work well, and we still have that program today. I went back to the MBTA and I said, since you're not paying for us and you're not doing anything for us and all you're doing is getting an assessment I wanted out of the, uh, MBTA district. And they said, well, you, you need to be part of some district. So we looked around and we found the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. We joined that transit authority and became members of that group. With all the responsibilities of being part of that group. They provided bus service in the town at our request. There wasn't sufficient ridership for it to continue, but they'd be happy to provide, uh, service to Sherburne as, as maybe needed. So we, we, we created this alternate. All these alternatives. And then we went back to them again and said, okay, we're ready to proceed now with the home rule petition to get out of the district. And they said, we're, we're having a hard time financially. We need all the revenues that we can get. Could you put that off for a while? So we said, we put it off for a while and nothing ever, we never. It, it basically got forgotten at our end. So here we are, every year. We're paying an assessment to the MBTA. We're a non-service community and we have to pay for all the.
Thanks. Can you wrap up, Paul?
So there is no, there is nothing bad that comes from our opting out of the district, only good.
Um, alright.
I need to hear. Thank you. All good, no bad.
Uh, Marion, did you have more to add on that? Cause we're on advisory discussion, or is that sort of new information that could wait till public comment?
I'll, I'll wait until the public discussion.
Thanks. Alright, any further, um, advisory discussions? I guess really that's my main question is, alright, well, what are the downsides to file? advisory discussions? I guess really that's my main question is, all right, well, what are the downsides to filing a home rule petition? And I guess Paul is saying that there are no downsides. I guess I would. I suppose I would like to know from, I don't know, planning board members, Gino, Chris, other select board members, do you concur that there are in fact no downsides to filing a home rule petition?
One thing I would just add is that we're not filing, this does not not a vote to file the home rule petition. This is a vote for the select to authorize a select board when we're ready to file a home rule petition. And we would have a vigorous discussion, and I would want to do a lot more research on whether there are other unintended consequences before I would ever vote as a select board member to actually file a petition. But I support giving it to all set of narrow and or quiver in case we need to use it.
Yeah, I guess ultimately my concern is that the voters of the town, for the voters of the town, this is effectively approving the home rule petition, right? They're ceding, they're ceding that discussion or that decision to the select board, and they're saying, you do it if you if if that's what you see fit. And so I just want to make sure that all the voters of the town have got as much information as possible that if you still need to do vigorous research and figuring this out, that maybe it would be more prudent for the town to wait until such further research has been done before giving you the authority to do so. And so that's why I want to hear from other people like, well, I've got Marion and I've got Chris.
All right, with Paul and maybe Gino might be able to clarify. If a home rule petition is filed, and I agree with you, Steve, that it should be conditional on what these guidelines actually end up being. But if it is filed, is this specific to our our, say, membership in the quote MBTA system, or is it specific to this specific to this section three A of the new law, which or both, or is it more general? Will it will it will it apply to other things?
So the way the petition, the way the article is written, it leaves it up to the select board. So you can have it as now, the the select board can have it as now is as just referring to a specific requirement. Or it can be more encompassing. As George said, this was something to be left for a later day, but we only have one town meeting a year. And it takes like a year and a year and a half to get these things enacted. The deadline is going to be coming up sooner than we want it to be. So this is a reserve authority with all of these issues to be decided later as needed. So if the regulations come in and they eliminate, you know, ten of the obnoxious things and just leave one, we can write it just for that one, if that's the way the board wants to go. I would like to make it more encompassing because we've been trying to get out of the MBTA district for a long time. I'd like to save the taxpayers the money. But the rest of the board may not be there yet. But we don't need to decide that now. The question is, give us this general authority. You'll notice in the article, the exact language of the home rule petition is not included. So it's, it does give us the discretion to write the the exact language later with our legislators and whatever the board ultimately decides.
Thank you. Chris?
Um, my initial concern with this. Our plan is to stay in interim compliance. We still don't know what the the final compliance will be or what will be required of us. I I felt a little bit better when I spoke to Paul and he said, well, we can submit this and we can hold on to it. Again, from a planning point of view, if they don't change it, it would be impossible to comply. But I also want to look like in dealing with the state that Sherburne is trying to play nice with them at least a little bit. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the article. I just think before we execute it, I think we have to think things through a little bit. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, Paul, go ahead.
The the idea is not to file it right away. And even if we filed it right away, we still have to have compliance in the meantime. So we're very much hopeful that Chris and the planning board and Gina work on compliance because we have to. Even if we filed it tomorrow, we're going to have to work on compliance for at least a year. So we're we're kind of counting on you, Chris, to go forward with this. But the intention is not to file it tomorrow at all. The intention is, we only have a meeting once a year, and that's in April. We don't know if these things are going to be fixed before April or not. Maybe they'll fix it before April and it'll all go away, at which point it may rarely will be on the floor of town meeting. We won't need this and we'll withdraw. But in the meantime, we need it. The indications I'm getting through back channels are they're enthusiastic about this, these requirements, they're going to meet these housing goals. They're going to force this issue. So rather than being defenseless at the end of the day or have to wait till maybe too late and we're well down towards implementing a plan that we cannot implement. This is to give us this insurance.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, our, and speaking with Gina, our plan is to stay in interim compliance. And and once we actually know what are required, what will be required to do, we were hoping when the planning board having a joint meeting with the select board probably in January.
Thank you. I mean, I guess for me ultimately that the the concern is sort of the timing as to is it necessary for the town to approve this authority this year? What is lost by waiting until next year's town meeting? It sounds like if the planning board can get us into temporary compliance that will run until December thirty first of two thousand twenty four, we would still have the April town meeting of two thousand twenty three, which would give us more than a year and a half to to file the home rule petition if it was determined a year from now that that was in fact a good strategy. I I can understand the argument that this article is not actually filing the home rule petition. It is simply giving the select board the authority, but one of our jobs as advisory is to look out for the best interests of the town. And when a warrant article is asking the town to cede its own voting authority to another body, that we want to make sure that that is actually something the town wants to do. If the town were to determine that, and when I say the town, I mean, the voters at town meeting were to decide, maybe this isn't a good idea. Well, this would be their last chance to say, no, we think this is a bad idea. Because once they approve it, now the authority is entirely in the hands of the five select board members and no longer a vote of town meeting. So that's my concern is that essentially what would be lost by voting no action on this and waiting until next year's town meeting to determine that, no, for real, this, we really have to do this now. What would be lost by doing that?
So if I could answer, what we lose is time. So if you look at the if you recall, the chart that Gina put up, we have our things, we have to follow a plan. And God help the planning board to come up with a plan that's going to build, that's going to provide for building by private parties of seven hundred and fifty. Well, and where are they going to go? That's going to royal this community that you're going to have. People saying, not, not in my backyard. We're going to have so many so many issues, controversies, disagreements in putting together that plan and then deal with implementing it. This is much cleaner and much better to be able to tell the residents that that we're not going to subject them to it, that we are going to protect them and protect the character of this community.
Thank you. All right, we're still in advisory discussion. So any other advisory members have questions or comments? Jane?
Yeah, I I share Steve's concerns. I mean, first of all, this is, this is the first we've seen of this warrant article. It had not been previously presented to us for any, you know, discussion or questioning earlier. We don't seem to have a clear list of positives and negatives on this. We are asking the citizens to just, as Steve said, leave everything in the hands of the select board, give up their right to vote regard, without full information on exactly what the consequence, you know, what what the implications are for that. And, you know, we're saying that time is an issue and we don't want to wait another year, or maybe we can't wait another year. But, you know, if if we're really up against a wall and we're facing a situation where the town is going to have to increase its size by fifty percent, I I think we could probably manage to have a special town meeting at that point to take action, you know, if need be. So I I'm very uncomfortable being asked to approve this today when, you know, I frankly, I don't think we really fully understand what we advisory would be voting on, let alone, you know, what the citizen, we'd be advising the citizens to give up in terms of their voting rights.
Thank you. Further advisory discussion?
Well stated by Jane, as always.
Just ask what, why are we saying that the citizens are giving away their right to vote? I mean, similar to us, the citizens will vote in the town meeting. Are you saying that because we don't have complete information yet?
Yeah, I think essentially what 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 I'm saying and what Jane is saying is at this town meeting, they are, the citizens are effectively voting for approval for a home rule petition when we don't believe that all the information has been isn't even available necessarily yet to determine whether or not that is a good idea. Effectively, the select board is asking that the citizens simply trust the select board to make the right decision, whatever that is. As opposed to saying, we have all of the facts and we believe this is a good decision. And we just need the authority and we will determine the appropriate time to execute it. We're not really even sure whether executing this is a good idea or not. But this will be the last chance for the town meeting voters to stop that vote from going forward. So essentially, if they say yes, then at any time over the next year, the select board is authorized to execute the home rule petition.
So so you, you, okay, so but but the vote is to authorize the select board. It's not to to vote for, to file a home rule petition, right? I mean, this is really just to authorize the select board and and and, you know, I got to imagine the select board is is is, you know, elected board and is is working on behalf of the town, right? So if it provides the flexibility in terms of the timeline, there was a question of how long is it going to take from the time you file this petition to approval? And the answer was somewhere maybe over a year. I just don't understand why we would, we would delay as opposed to provide, to authorize the select board to have that flexibility or yeah, that's my, that's my comment.
Yeah, I mean, for me, ultimately, it's just a question of where where do we want the ultimate authority for this decision to reside? Do we want to keep it in the hands of the town meeting voters for as long as possible? Or do we want to put it in the hands of the select board as early as possible? I think that's the, those are the two questions that we're having. Or that is the question that we are deciding. And it's it's unclear to me what the correct answer is. I guess I would ask Gino and Chris, and certainly I'll let Marion speak first, but whether you agree that the timeline is tight enough that there is a material advantage to the select board having the author authorization to file home rule petition now as opposed to giving them the authorization a year from now. I'm just wondering if if the timing is actually so tight. But I will have Marion speak first since your hand was raised really first.
All right, maybe Gino knows this better than I, but I believe, you know, it's March thirty first, all the comments are in, including those from M A P C and others. And then they'll decide on the guidelines. The the law is already passed. Once they've decided on the guidelines, on March thirty first, it's out of our, what it's going to look like is out of our hands. But it's reasonable to assume, I think, that in the in the few months after March thirty first, we're going to see guidelines that are set in stone. And then we'll know for sure what the cost is, but we know already. We know already that this is going to be, have a huge impact on the town, even if the guidelines are softened to the degree that M A P C is trying to soften them. So I would just add that the select board is answerable to the citizens of the town. And I can't imagine that this would be filed without consulting the citizens of the town in public hearings, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not as if the select board is going to be a loose cannon on this. It's a, it's a big deal. We wouldn't do that. And we're answerable to the town. Just my comment.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. I would argue that the timing is necessary. It is an advantage to actually approve this now. To go through legislation is very difficult. It's not just you have to worry about when they're in session, when they're not in session, but when the subcommittee is a meeting and making sure it's properly heard through the subcommittees. Now, keep in mind, now, we do have a certain representative, sorry, Kat, we do have a certain representative right now that's going to change, but due to redistricting, this representative will not be our representative in the November election. The person who would be up for election has stepped down. There's a lot of variables in here. So effectively, we almost don't have a representative that actually has an interest in representing us between now and November. With those unknowns, I think we got to start doing the research now. I've already had someone reach out to me who's running for this position, was running to be representative. I think we got to reach out to our former one in Natick. We got to reach out to the people who are running. And we have to actually know that we have authorization right now to pass this and have them know that we are serious. We got to have someone who's knowledgeable, who can shepherd this through the subcommittees and and basically make this be effective. It may, if you give us authorization now, it still may take two years. But to actually approach them and say, well, you know, they weren't real confident, town meeting voted it down, and, you know, we may, we're going to go for it next time. And then to respond, if we have an emergency or something else to pop up, you can ask Jackie, you know, there's the expense and logistics of actually having a special town meeting, particularly just for one article. So I would encourage the advisory to actually authorize this. If it helps relay their concerns that, you know, the select board isn't a proper enough vetting for for town, we could actually have an agreement to actually make it a full-fledged hearing when we discuss it. We discuss the language of this special legislation, so there's proper notices that are out and so on. And that way it'll it'll actually give much more assurance that the full town is aware and involved of of this, of our draft legislation. That's all.
Thank you. We're still in the advisory discussion session. So any further comments from advisory? How how would advisory members feel about adding in to our motion a provision that, you know, should a a home rule petition would not be filed without a public hearing by the select board? Or do you feel that that would be unnecessary?
Unnecessary.
Unnecessary.
Yeah, I'm, I think I'm in the unnecessary camp too. I think it'd be fine.
Okay. All right, any other advisory discussion? Closing advisory discussion and reopening public comment. Last call for public comment. Jackie Morse?
Yeah, hi, thank you. I just want to reiterate, I would like to see you guys vote in favor of this. It does take a year, a year and a half. If the select board decides to file the home rule petition, I have full confidence that the board will do what's right for the town. And also just another comment, special town meeting is extremely expensive, so I would like to try to avoid that. That's all.
Thank you, Jackie. Last call for public comments. All right, closing. Closing public comment. All right, opening the advisory voting session. Who wants to move something?
I move favorable action on Article twenty-three.
But a motion and a second. Any advisory discussion? I will say that I'm generally convinced by the comments of all the various recent people, so I will be voting in favor of it. Any further discussion? And I'm going to take a roll call vote. Mark Alders. Mark, you're muted.
Hi, sorry.
Wasim Basali.
Hi.
Brendan Daly. Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Steve Lee.
Hi.
Jane Marrazo.
Well, abstain.
Dan, Dan Sickel.
Hi.
I'm also an I. The motion carries seven zero one. Thank you. All right, moving on to Article twenty-four Sherburne Community Center lease. And actually not sure, is this Sean Clean, is this one yours?
This and several others after.
Yeah, let's do this one first. The twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven are going to be consent, but this this lease one, we're going to do separately.
The Sherbert Community Center, not a lot of people realize is leased currently right now for a dollar a year to the Sherburne Community Center Foundation, who is tasked with caring for it. They do all the planning, everything else. There is currently, we're in a one-year extension on the lease. And that's the final extension, so. Town meeting has to approve the select board putting this out to RFP and signing another lease. So within the next year, something has to be done or the building goes essentially vacant and there's nothing to cover the the next article, which would be the the lease, because there is a cell tower there that that's covered by this lease. So that's essentially it. This is giving the select board the authority to to execute on a lease, which currently is undetermined. They need to put it out to RFP.
Thank you. Eric, select board vote on this?
Yep, I voted on February third to support this five zero.
Thank you. Opening the public comment session. Last call for public comments. Closing the public comment session and opening advisory discussion.
Is there really truly any other outside interest other than the community, the community center organization, or whatever they're called, to rent this space? Like, when we go through a RFP process, is it potentially possible that some outside entity is going to come in and decide they want to lease that space for twenty years?
Well, legally, you have to do, you have to allow anybody, and it is possible. Of course, it's possible. There's been other uses during the years. They all fell with under, with, within the master lease with the Community Center Foundation. So, you know, potentially that same thing could happen again. And they have the ability to sublease it or the town can decide to do something different with the building. Currently, the town can't decide to do anything because no, there's no authority to do anything with that building after, after this lease expires.
And is the Community Center Foundation an appointed committee board association?
Appoint. Paul, you want to answer that?
Yes, there is a foundation, we am I muted?
No, you're here.
Separate foundation. We wanted a separate organization because when we, the the building was falling apart and you wanted somebody who could do fundraising and and be able to have events there to raise money. So they have like weddings there and stuff like that. We didn't want to be involved in in having weddings and having that, that kind of responsibility. So there a fully qualified duly recorded foundation privately.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, any further advisory discussion? Right. Closing the, oh, no, go ahead, Jane. You're muted.
Just a question, are these leases typically, for lack of a better term, you know, firm absolute leases, or are there typically provisions that would allow the town, if it had another use that it wanted, you know, to to put for this building, would there be an out that the town could potentially have under these leases?
The answer to that is that we, in fact, put the library in there under the current lease. So, yeah.
By consent of the, you know, community center though, or does the town have the ability to do something like that in the future, you know, later?
There's provisions of the lease about the town use of the building, things like meetings and and town uses. But the the library was by consent because of the length of time. It, it's, it's been years now that the community center hasn't been able to operate the way they they wanted to. So, yes. As a matter of comedy and good relations best practice, we've worked with the consent. We didn't try to pull any, any legal tricks on them.
And I think that the answer to that question could be well debated when it's time for the RFP that or even negotiating the the lease. But none of that can happen without town meeting authority, or you'd be doing it somewhat a year in advance.
Yeah, I mean, if this were something less than twenty years, I have absolutely no concerns at all about it, but it's just, you know, if this were a firm commitment that the town was going to make for twenty years with no ability to, you know, use that property for some other purpose, that makes me a little, you know, a little less comfortable.
So in doing the RFP, if I could, it doesn't require us to accept any bids. And I just recalled that when we were rebuilding the town hall building, we needed offices, so we imposed on the community center. I recall having many select board meetings there at, on a regular basis at the community center. So it's always been a partnership. This isn't the, an adversarial relationship, but the foundation are all residents of the town. They care about the town. They're committed to the town.
Thanks. I see Amanda's already that you have opened your camera. Did you have something to say on to to Jane's question?
Yes, through you, Mr. Side to Ms. Marrazzo. I just wanted to clarify that the language of the article as written is that it authorizes the lease for a term up to twenty years, not for a flat term of twenty years. That is to enable the board of selection to enter an agreement that may be less, excuse me, less than twenty years.
Eric, she's got you on the cat jumping on the computer.
My humanity has been disclosed. I wasn't expecting that.
Okay, George and Jeff, put your hands up. I do want to remind you, this is the advisory discussion, so if you're addressing Jane's comment, go ahead.
That's exactly what I wanted to do if I could. I'm just going to say, this is excuse me, typical of any real estate negotiation, I would think, as the select board, you're giving the select board authority to negotiate a lease where we, we can carve in, we we should, we definitely should, when we do this lease, put in a provision that we have uses, that we have the ability to use the facility. I wouldn't want to do a lease without that, especially for a town-owned building. And then also, I think, before we make the decision on the lease, I mean, there's been some discussion about the historical commission and the use of that for that building. So I think we're going to take that all into consideration before we sign a long-term lease with somebody for the whole facility, I think.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, I agree with Jane and George, and I'm just going to add, you know, the concept in whatever year it was, nineteen eighty-eight, was that the building was going to raise this, the town was going to raise this building, so they didn't. They set up the foundation that manages the operating costs and the capital costs funded through the events and revenue that they generate. So another thing you asked about, could we lease it to someone else, or what are the odds of that? The foundation does have funds. They're, they're saving funds for capital expenditures, like probably soon the roof replacement. So they, that foundation is a registered, whatever, is five oh one C three nonprofit, and it has a, I don't know the amount, but it has a balance of funds to address some of the capital needs in the building. In addition to funding the operating cost on an ongoing basis, so it's more than just a simple lease in terms of there's funds that are committed to that building, even though the building's owned by the town. It's kind of a weird, weird, weird relationship. And I attended their annual meeting this year. They handed me a crisp new dollar bill to pay, pay me their rent. So it's kind of a hot situation.
Thanks. Frank, I'm just going to ask you to hold off since we're still on the advisory discussion session, which I think is probably about to close, so I'm going to reopen public comments soon. Is there any further advisory discussion? All right, here we're done. I'm going to reopen public comment. So Frank, if you had something to say, go ahead.
So I I'm on the the Community Center Board. I just wanted to clarify that in nineteen eighty-five, the foundation was established to take over the building that was, that was already deemed by the town for destruction, not for, not for maintaining it, but for the exact opposite. And it was a group of citizens back in the day that tried to reverse that and was able to do that, raise the funds, a large sum of funds privately to renovate the building and then use a building as a facility to provide service to the town, as well as to provide functions to make some money to be able to su, to support and continue to renovate and improve as well, as well as to maintain that capital fund or any capital expenses. So in the entire period of time, it's been the foundation who has been in there, was the one with the lease that has completely kept that, that building going. It's a building from eighteen eighty-five. It's a very old building. It's very costly to maintain, but it's, it's, it's what the foundation has been doing in all this time. Had it not been for the foundation, there would not be that building. There would not be this discussion now. So I just want, want you to know that, you know, there might be some other potential people that would want to bid on the on the RFP. But for the foundation, the the goal would be is to have the use of the building so that we can continue to maintain and operate it in a way that it provides a service for the town, working together with all town organizations and as well as, you know, the caucus and whatever situation that we have, and however we can best help the town and improve our town.
Thank you, Frank. Sean.
Yeah, I just want to try to pull the discussion back in. None of this is really relevant to the town meeting vote that we're going to be asking for. The lease is going to be up. This is a, this is a great discussion to have, but not in this forum and not a town meeting. The town, the select board has no authority to do anything with that building without town meeting authority. So we need to just kind of keep it to that. There's a lot of long discussions that probably need to be had in select board meetings. But we really don't need to keep going into the weeds on this now.
Thanks, Sean. Good point. With that, I'm going to call for, last call for public comments. Right, closing public comments and opening the advisory voting session.
I move favorable action on Article twenty-four.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? All right, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Mark Alders.
Hi.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Steve Lee.
Hi.
Jane Marrazo.
Hi.
Dan Sickel.
Hi.
I'm also an I. Motion carries eight zero. All right, so now for the next three articles, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, I am proposing that we cover these as a consent agenda, because they all are very similar in that they are wireless communications leases for three different towers in town. So that means we will have a public comment, advisory discussion, and comment again for all three together and vote all three together at the end. But first, I'm just going to propose so that any advisory members can hold if necessary, proposing that we consider Article twenty-five Wireless Communications Lease, Sherburne Community Center Lease, Article twenty-six Wireless Communications Lease to twelve Lake Street, and Article twenty-seven Wireless Communications Lease one fourteen Hunting Lane as a consent agenda in that they are all similar subject matter.
Second.
All right. Let's see, Sean, do you want to just go ahead and present all three of these together?
The first, we briefly discussed, there is a Verizon cell tower in the Kupla of the Community Center. That's currently not a lease with the town. That's a lease with the Community Center Foundation, so as we said, that's going to expire this year. So that tower needs to go out for RFP. The Lake Street one is not at the end of its term, but the current Lisi has asked that we put it back out. As well as the Hunting Lane one is at the end of its term. This board will remember both this board and the select board looked at several different offers that the town did not entertain to buy out the lease, to buy the land or perpetual easements. That was all turned down, so for that reason, we, Lake Street needs to go back out for RFP, and Hunting Lane would need to anyway, because that term is going to expire.
Thank you. Select board, did you vote on all three of these?
Yes, we did. All the same night, too. So on February third, the select board voted unanimously five zero on each of these three articles to support.
Thank you. Opening public comment for Articles twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, the wireless communications leases. Last call for public comments. All right, closing the public comment period and opening advisory discussion.
I thought Sean explained these very well the other evening, while we, or on the March ninth meeting, advisor meeting. I have no questions.
Thank you. Any further advisory comments? Right, closing advisory discussion and reopening public comments. Last call for public comments. Closing public comments and opening advisory voting session.
I move favorable action on Articles twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven individually or separately, however we want to do that. I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Alders.
Hi.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly. Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Steve Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Matarazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
I'm also an I. Motion carries eight zero. All right, so now Articles twenty-eight and twenty-nine, I am also proposing that we consider as consent agenda as they are, again, very similar subject matter. So Article twenty-eight Verizon easement for Village Way slash Leland Drive and Article twenty-nine Verizon easement for, for Sanger Street Sherburne Lab, Sherburne Library. So I guess Sean, again, you want, yeah, I would just cover with these two?
Yeah, so the first one is Village Way and Leland. About a year ago, we asked Verizon to run fire service into the Woodhaven complex. That was never done when we originally signed the cable contracts some twenty years ago. We just chose not to do it. So they're doing it now. Nowadays, to give, basically to give them dual permission to be on the property and install it as well as protect their asset for doing it, they ask for an easement like this. The reason town meeting needs to approve this is because it's on town property. It's not just within the road right away or the road layout. It's on the town's property that Woodhaven and Leland both sit on. So town meeting needs to give approval for the easement. Similarly, the library, we did the same thing with the library. We asked them to run fire service into the building to do that. They ask for an easement basically within the pipe. We installed the pipe, but they asked for an easement to guarantee that it's in there, gives them permission to be in there. And ensures that we're not going to ask them to take it out. When that first came up a couple of years ago, attorneys already researched back at the original town meeting vote to do the library and, and the wording wasn't quite right. Otherwise, it would have, it would have given the select board authority to just execute that easement, but it was felt that, that they didn't actually have that authority. So town meeting needs to give that, that authority for that easement. They're as simple as that. I have a map to share if you wanted to see it, but it's really not all that descriptive of, you know, it's just the layout going down Woodhaven Village Way to Woodhaven buildings.
Yeah, I don't think we need to see the map. Eric's board vote on this?
Yep, on February third, voting unanimously for both articles, five zero.
Thank you. All right, opening public comment. Last call for a public comment. Closing public comment and opening advisory discussion. Jane.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a question for council or for some of our town officials who work with other towns on a regular basis, but I, I'm just curious as to whether permanent easements of this nature are typical and required and routinely given by, you know, other towns in these contexts.
Would you like to answer that, Mr. Durencis, or have me do it?
Well, I I have my own way of doing things. So I, I, where I write them, it's a right easements, but I, they're the right to revoke it in case we have to do a project if we want to reconstruct and all that kind of stuff. So the word permanent and the ones that I draft isn't as permanent as the word implies. But Amanda, you add to whatever you want.
Yeah, no, no, the utility easements that I'm accustomed to seeing in, in many other municipalities are permanent. They can be relocated by mutual ascent of the town and Verizon or another utility provider, but only upon authorization of town meeting, because what it is, the easement is conveying a perpetual interest in town on real estate. What Mr. Durencis is speaking about is more in the nature of what is called the license, not, not in, as we think of it as a a license, like a, a permit to do something, but rather a warning to the utility company that the town can revoke its permission for entry at any time. Verizon is currently working under a license that is revocable at will by the select board. They're seeking a permanent right, which it's entirely up to the voters to determine if they want to permit that or not. I, I don't find it offensive or problematic to the town in any way, but again, that's for, for you and the voters to determine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question very similar to Jane, really about the permanence. Permanent bothers me a little bit and, and I probably would be a little bit more in favor of, of capping a term. Obviously Verizon, they, they would, they would put their equipment to serve our town building. So, so they don't want to do that investment without a return on investment and hence it's very understood that they would want the easement. But permanent easement to me is, is not, is what if we want to make an update, you know, fifty years from now, we can't, right? Just because Verizon has an easement for a pipe there. I, I, I don't know how that works, but I, I would assume that they can recoup their investment in, let's say, twenty or thirty years. So I'll probably be more comfortable. Long-term easement as opposed to a permanent easement.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, just respond to Mr. Basali. You could do that. I, I don't know what the response, what response you would have from Verizon. With respect to utility and other infrastructure easements, they do tend to be perpetual in nature. I, I suspect that you'll find Bell Telephone Company and New England Telephone and Telegraph Company easements that are, you know, date back decades that are perpetual in nature. And again, the, the easement can be released by Verizon or relocated with consent of the Board of Selectmen as authorized by, by town meeting. So, you know, legislatively, that, that does happen in communities. But again, it, it's, I, I say that only to give you some, some comfort and, and how you decide is, and how the voters decide will, will determine what happens.
Thank you, Eric.
I would encourage positive, um, positive action on this article because Verizon is not going to make huge money off the handful of elderly people that are looking to actually use them because they already have Comcast going there. And this is actually all competition within that's actually requested at the request of the residents of Woodhaven to actually allow Verizon to come in there. And whatever handful of units they have and whatever subset of those actually get this, I don't think this is a real moneymaker for Verizon. And I think the permanent thing, this gives them the confidence that they're going to put something in, have an investment and have it stay there. A permanent easement can be withdrawn. Particularly one that's gifted like this, since it was not done with compensation, you don't have to worry about future compensation to actually withdraw, to withdraw. Just as this, as attorneys already had just indicated there, it just requires an active town meeting to do so in the future. And this gives Verizon the confidence and responsibility. So if they put something in a, in a permanent easement, they're responsible for the maintenance and improvements and repairs of that infrastructure that's, that's in that easement. They essentially own their property. As Sean has indicated, you know, it's not a grant location under town's rights of ways. If they put something in like Farm Road, they have state law that guarantees them the right to do it. Under grant location, you can tell them how to put it in there. You can tell them, you know, put it there, put it there, but you cannot stop them from putting it in. So in some ways, it's no different than actually what's done by right under the Department of Public Utilities under grant location on the public right of way process. And again, ultimately, this isn't for Verizon, it's for the residents of Woodhaven. I don't think Verizon cares that much if they get twenty more business, twenty more people watching cable TV. So for the resident, for the sake of the residents of Woodhaven, I encourage favorable action on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion among advisory members? All right, closing advisory discussion, reopening public comment. Last call for public comment. All right, closing public comment and opening the advisory voting session for the consent agenda of Articles twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
I move favorable action on Articles twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Stephen Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Matarazzo.
Hi.
Diane, Dan Sickle. I keep wanting to say Diane, I'm sorry.
I'm an I. No worries.
I'm also an I, eight zero, motion carries. All right, we are on to Article thirty, which is release right title and interest in and to a portion of Obed Lane. Is this you again, Sean?
Well, somewhat, but I'm going to just hand it off to him, man.
Okay.
And my house pets. Do I have permission to share the screen?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I'm going to turn off my camera because I, from experience, when I have both my camera on and try to share, there's a, a long hesitation. What, what I'm about, excuse me, what I'm about to show you is really intended just to be helpful. This is the land court plan that is referred to in the town meeting article. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Um, so if you'll notice that this is the north arrow, if you can see my cursor.
Yep.
Moving around.
Yes.
Okay, and this is Lake Street. Obed Lane is this way, and I will make this a little bit larger so that folks can see that is approximately, it looks like it's about twenty-five point four or twenty-four point five feet wide. And it encumbers, meaning that it burdens the eastern side of Route One, which I believe has the street address of twenty-three Lake Street. The owner has come to the town requesting that the town release its right title and interest in, in Obed Lane. And so for those of you who are familiar with Lake, Lake Street, the town also does have Obed Lane on the south side. The town is not being asked to release that interest. They are only being asked to release this roughly twenty-five foot a wide portion of a way that burdens this lot one. Um, one of the questions that I recall having been asked was whether this, the town actually owns the fee interest in this way, meaning whether it actually owns the dirt from the core of, of the earth to the heavens. It does not. My reading of the, of the language on the current owner's deed is that this is in the nature of an easement for which the town no longer has any use. If I drag down so you can see the rest of the lot, there's sort of this, this goose neck that goes up to what I imagined was once a pasture. It seems to me that this might once have been a right of way for farm vehicles. I don't know that for sure. But the town is, is considered to hold an interest in this portion of, of Obed Lane for which it has no reason. Um, and because there is this right of way that burdens the property, the property owner has asked that it be released. So if everyone is, is comfortable with that, I will stop sharing unless you'd like me to keep it up. And I'll, I'll let Sean respond to any questions or if anyone from the advisory committee or the select board has questions and happy to answer those. Is it okay if I stop sharing?
Um, yes, that's fine. Thank you.
I don't know if it's worth it. I, I have another map that's the rest of the, it shows all the rest of the properties as they are now. We, we went through it a couple of times. It really just begs the question of where that easement ever used to go, but it doesn't go anywhere now. It's completely surrounded by private property. It looks like maybe somebody, it, it was a cart path, but it also maybe before they planned out Morse Road, it could have looped back. But it, it, it can't do that now. Everything else has been subdivided and chopped up, so.
Thanks.
Been well debated in the past couple of meetings.
Yep. Eric, select board vote on this?
Yep, voting unanimously to support this article on a five zero on a February twenty-fourth.
Thank you. All right, opening the public comment session. I'd like to recognize Lisa Clifton.
Hello, everyone. I own twenty-three Lake Street. And I've had this cart path on my deed for a while. And the reason that I'm coming in front of the town is I'm trying to get it cleared off my deed so that I can go in front of the ZPA to attempt to get a variance to put a garage in. So I am hoping to just get it cleared off my deed. It's, it's the road that basically goes nowhere.
Thank you. All right, any further public comments? Last call for public comment. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and open advisory discussion.
I'm sorry if I missed this in the previous discussion when it was up on screen. So is the town still hold the rights to the actual rest of the lane behind this part that's supposed to, that we're trying to, um, indeed, on Google?
Um, yes, I, I believe Sean did say that to the south portion that the town does still retain its, its.
So that's just an island of road or land if the town controls in the midst of other people's properties?
Yeah, so that you mean the current one that we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes. Actually, it isn't even actually a road or anything. It's, it's actually lawn, right?
Ah, okay.
Actually, the driveway, like the, the other end of Obed Lane actually connects Lake Street to Butler Street. So it exists in a different form. It's, and does, and does give access to one house. But it, it, this, this has really nothing to do with that, that Obed Lane.
So you mean, just to be clear, Sean, O, Obed Lane to the south of Lake Street is not affected by this vote?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further advisory discussion?
It just seems like there's, there's no.
Go ahead, Mark.
It seems like there's no down, it seems like there's no downside to this. There is a tremendous upside for the, for the owner here. So it seems we should just pass this.
Peter.
I, I just was wondering if the homeowner paid taxes on that or because it was an easement, it was town land and was not taxed.
I, I pay taxes on it, yes.
Oh, and that makes it simple.
Yeah, and, and also the, the, the ownership vests in Ms. Clifton. The town does not own that portion of the land. They have only some right to travel.
Thank you.
Further advisory discussion? All right, I'm closing advisory's discussion and reopening public comment. Last call for public comment. Closing public comment and now opening the advisory voting session.
I move positive action on Article thirty.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any advisory discussion relative to the motion? All right, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wasim Basali. Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Stephen Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Matarazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickle.
Hi.
I'm also an I. Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, on to Article thirty-one, the penultimate article for this hearing. Citizens petition Rockwood Street maintenance updates. And do we have John Hargrave here to present?
Hi, Steve.
Hello.
Yeah, so on behalf of the residents of Rockwood Street, I will share my screen here. All right. Our road, Rockwood Street, is being washed away. We love this road. It's an important road for Sherburne and it's where we live. But climate change and lot development have caused record water runoff and this erosion is eating away our road. You know, we often talk about the costs of climate change, but now we're seeing it right here in Sherburne. You'll notice this is a theme through many of the items that I, we've discussed. I'm sure you've noticed we're seeing increased rainfall due to global warming. Look out your window. I'm sure, uh, you've noticed we're seeing increased rainfall due to global warming. Look out your window today. And because our road is directly in the path of all that runoff, we need to take action. The road requires, uh, proper drainage of standing water. Uh, this is the, uh, Peters Hill or Hill going up to Peters Hill, and you see how that water just spills over the road. Uh, this is the access road to the power lines, uh, that goes up to the path to Peters Hill, and you can see this also just, uh, erodes the, the road quickly. So we need to fix the drainage of all this standing water. We need to widen it in two places to accommodate two vehicles, and we need an asphalt surface to minimize erosion and keep drivers and pedestrians safe. And we're excited about what this can look like when it's done. We can make it friendly for joggers and for bikers and for dog walkers. And it's really perfect because it's a long street with a dead end. So we have a great opportunity to make it super bike-friendly, um, like we recently tried to do with Whitney Street. Uh, this is much safer, of course, and, uh, much more dog-friendly like we made with the new rail trail connector, which is awesome. Everybody should check that out. We're grateful to Director Colleen and the Sherburne Highway Department for spending so much time and money repairing this road. We really, they are out here constantly patching this road and keeping it passable. And I personally feel terrible that so many tax dollars are spent on our road just keeping it patched. But the good news is the town will save so much money over the long term in maintenance costs. We have a citizens petition signed by Rockwood Street residents. We have several sources of potential funding. And we're excited to welcome more bikers and hikers to Laurel Fields next door to Peters Hill, one of my favorite hiking spots in Sherburne, and to Douse Orchard, one of our most important Sherburne businesses. These are all Rockwood Street connectors. And this can really be a special project for the town. We can't turn back the clock on climate change or pretend that it doesn't exist. It's time for us to pave Rockwood Street and make it a safe, beautiful road for residents and visitors. And we look forward quite literally to sharing the road with you. We ask you to vote yes on Article thirty, Rockwood Street Maintenance and Updates. Thank you.
Alright, I was muted. Eric, uh, did the select board vote on this?
Um, yep, I voted, um, three to one not to, um, support this article. So three people didn't want to support it, one person did. The double negative is always confusing.
Yeah. Uh, opening public comments on, uh, Article thirty-one. Eric?
Oh, yeah. Paul, it's a public comment. I think it actually gets managed by Stephen. I think we're, unless you want to reopen the vote or reconsider our vote, um, you're talking to, through the, uh, through Steve.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Paul. And you're muted right now.
There. I just want to explain my vote, uh, against taking no action on this article. At the time this came before us, we discussed the fact that before the road could be fixed, the drainage fixed and so on, engineering work needed to be done. So we took our vote to take no action on this, but I voted no because I felt that we should have some further action to investigate what the, what it would cost to get this work done. My reasoning is that we're all one community and that, uh, we should take care of all the members of the community and protect what the rest of us. Since that vote was taken, Sean Colleen has stepped forward and funding is, has been made available to study road and to provide, uh, some cost estimates for the select board. So our our, is that we need to get the engineering work done, or my feeling is we need to get that engineering work done. And we need to get some idea of what's involved here, what, what solutions can be done, what's available before we actually go ahead and pave the road. So that, that work is now in progress. We're not gonna have the results for this town meeting.
Sorry, Paul, just for clarification, you said that we will not have the results of the engineering in time for town meeting, but the, but that process has begun?
Yes, so we're trying to accommodate the the request. We're not just, we ended up not just saying, even though the vote was three to one against the article, I was the one saying, don't just dismiss the article. We ended up trying to figure out how to address this as, as a responsible select board. And so work is being done by Sean Colleen, and he can fill you in on, on the details. It's coming out of his budget to have an engineer look at it and give us some more numbers. I believe you'll have to check with him, but I believe that information is likely to be available for this town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any further public comment? I will recognize a Juliet bench. Uh, you're, and you're muted right now, Juliet.
Sorry, we had a barking dog in the background. Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I'm a resident of Rockwood Street. We, uh, my, my husband and I and our daughter live at forty-five Rockwood. And, um, you know, we have lived here for five years and it is a wonderful road. It's a very scenic road. And there have been so many times where I've appreciated the dirt road aspect of it. Um, like John said, the last few years have had a, a number of days that it's just, you know, not impassable for all cars, but impassable for some. Um, we've had many canceled services over these specific days of like melting and freezing kind of weather. And, you know, the town does a great job of getting out here and re-grading the road and clearing the road, but you know, inevitably, just because of the drainage and the nature of the road, we do have those issues from time to time. Um, and my position has always been, well, there's only really four houses on Rockwood Street. Why would the town want to pay for this? But, um, I think John makes a really good point that it's a wonderful recreational. Um, it has a wonderful recreational potential for the town. It's very scenic. There's a cul-de-sac right at Douse Orchards. Um, people walk up from Everett Street, cross over, walk their dogs down. And if there's a way to tie this into the town center, we're at the end of the public sidewalk for town. Um, and perhaps there's an op, there's an opportunity really to look at it that way, where we have this treasure in our town and we as residents of the road get to experience that. And, and why not um, make it a priority for the town to, to bring that it, to people that can already use the sidewalk um, and are sort of more incentivized to like ride their bikes and walk their dogs and that type of thing. So that's all I wanted to say, you know, in regards to the, as it moves forward.
Thank you. Is that a deck house that you're in?
Yes, it is. It's, um, Grace Shepherd's and, uh, Jim Shepherd's old house.
Oh.
Yes.
Lovely. Um, alright, any further public comments? Last call for public comments. Uh, let's see, John Hargrave? Uh, you're muted, John. Oh, no, wait, where?
I hadn't heard that from Juliet, but thank you for sharing that. I do think that's a great idea. Um, we, I run a lot from our road all the way down to the town center and even up into the Pine Hill Cemetery, and it's really a lovely walk and a bike ride, and it does connect this part of town with, uh, with everything else. So I think that's a terrific idea to see it as part of that uh, town improvement to that sort of Emerald Necklace in Sherburne.
Thank you. Uh, Richard Robinson?
Thank you. Um, I don't know whether this is, uh, characteristic or not of, of warrant articles at this point, but there's no dollar figure attached to this, and I'm not really sure how townspeople are gonna be able to judge whether, uh, to vote on this or not without some dollar figure attached. I'm kind of interested in the process at this point.
Thank you, Richard. Further public comment? Last call for public comment. Alright, closing public comment and opening the advisory discussion. And yeah, just to jump off of what Richard said, I do, uh, I may, you know, I think I made this comment, uh, when the, this petition was before advisory, but as you said, there's no dollar amount here. So, I mean, there's pretty much no way that, um, advisory is going to recommend favorable action on this. Uh, so uh, it is exceedingly likely that, um, that, that we will not recommend favorable action, but, um, go ahead, Mark, if you had something to say.
No, you took the words right out of my mouth. I don't know why we would even entertain this and how we're supposed to vote as advisory, but we don't have any cost estimates on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately, um, you know, Sean Colleen has been given authorization to spend up to, I think it was twenty thousand dollars on engineering study to kind of look at what would need to be done and to come up with some cost estimates. Um, I think, you know, obviously that would be, that's the very first step, and he's already, uh, authorized to, I think he has already begun that process. Um, I think ultimately for this to be something that is even actually under consideration at all, we would need the cost estimate, and then we would need to get, uh, you know, cost benefit analysis. Um, you know, you would need to get from the DPW an analysis of how much money they are actually spending, uh, each year on maintenance of, um, Rockwood Street, and then an estimate of the cost of, um, this project and then the annual debt service. And, uh, also what, um, DPW would estimate they would be spending on maintenance after it was paved, and then we would have a before and after cost benefit analysis. That's really the only way that we could make any kind of a reasonably informed uh, recommendation to the town as to whether or not this is a good idea.
Though.
Yeah, and also what the.
Sorry, go ahead, Mark.
I was just gonna say, and also what the, the, the other option is what the cost would be for remediation of drainage, whatever, without paving that road. You know, that seems like that would be a, an option too.
Where I was gonna add, in, in my mind, it sounds like moving to pave this road would likely turn this into a capital cost that can be financed over many, many years at current low interest rates. Um, versus, we currently are dealing with a operational cost on an ongoing basis. And as we all know, operational costs are only going up and have been for a while, whether that's cost of fuel, cost of materials, cost of labor, that's all going up. This would be a chance, even without the hard numbers in place, it would be a chance to lock in, um, whatever the amount is to be paid off over a long-term, like fixed and known amount of cost every year.
And I should say also, um, John, that I, I would say that your, your best course of action really is to convince, um, the DPW director that this is a good idea so that this becomes a project that he is putting forward as his, uh, uh, something that, that he is recommending to the town that it is a good idea, um, which makes it a lot easier to be asking him to do all of this legwork to figure out the cost of maintaining Rockwood and, uh, to be asking the treasurer to determine what would be the estimated cost of debt service and all of these things. It's a lot of legwork. It's a lot of hours for which these, um, employees are paid taxpayer money. And, um, I don't know that as a citizens petitioner, um, you could reasonably, uh, encumber them with that task. Um, whereas if you were to convince, um, the DPW director that this is a good idea, and he agreed, um, it would be something that he would sponsor forward um, on his own as a DPW project, um, that would ultimately be your, your best, um, strategy. That's, that's just my opinion. Uh, Dan?
Uh, John, thanks for the, uh, presentation, and I did recently drive down Rockwood, and it is a lovely, lovely road. Um, question for you on the, on the petition. Um, did every house on the street sign? And what about the Douse Orchard folks? What's the, I, I didn't quite get a sense from how you talked about it, whether it was everybody or most of the people or, or what the numbers are for how many people signed the petition in favor of, uh, paving and redoing the road?
Uh, everyone we approached signed. We got the majority of signatures. We did not approach the Douse.
Uh, and so I take it from that, then, if everyone you approached signed, there are some people, some houses on the street that for whatever reason couldn't connect with them, you didn't approach. So it's not, it's not literally every house on the street is in favor of it. It's a majority of houses on the street are in favor of it.
Yeah, it's the majority. We didn't need to get all the signatures to get all the signatures that we needed to get the fourteen signatures to get the, there were plenty of people who were ready to sign it.
Yeah, no, thanks. I, I, I understand that. I was just trying to understand if the support amongst the people living on Rockwood was nearly unanimous or, you know, just a majority or just because it, I, I could imagine, could be wrong, but could imagine there'd be people who like it in its current form. Um, and, you know, that's why I was just wondering, I just, whether the support was, was nearly unanimous or, or somewhat short of that. It sounds like it was somewhat short of that.
Well, Dan, if you're saying that a unanimous signature, we get the road paved, then we're happy to get unanimous support.
Uh, it's not my place to say that. I'm just trying to understand the strength of, you know, the strength of support behind the, behind the petition. That, that, that was all.
It's the majority of residents on this.
Okay. Good, thanks. Thanks, appreciate that.
Alright, any further advisory discussion?
Eric, question, but a quick follow-up question. I think I heard that there are six houses, and also I heard that there are four. How many houses are there actually on this?
There are six.
And, and again, the, the, the article is to pave, right? So it's, it's not, you know, Sean is doing, DPW is doing the engineering study with the.
Uh, Wassim, your audio is, is quite bad. I can't hear you. I don't understand, Wassim. You used to have like the best audio of all the advisory members, and today it's just like, it's almost unworkable. Do you wanna try using your computer mic? Uh, you still sound really bad.
Alright, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it.
Sorry. Alright, any further advisory discussion? Alright, uh, closing advisory discussion, reopening public comment. Marian?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, am I muted? No, I'm not.
Nope, we're good.
But to give you a, a sense of the select board discussion, uh, the select board, I think it's fair to say the consensus was that, yes, something needs to be done about Rockwood Street for the residents that live there. The town does, they deserve a workable street. Exactly what that solution is obviously is going to be coming up, but I just wanted to say that the fact that the residents have submitted this, uh, this petition has really, uh, done its work, I should say. Uh, that it's brought attention to the problem. And, uh, I would say that at least the select board is very much disposed to making something happen to make your road workable. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, you understood that, uh, we truly do support fixing this street to make it a good place for you to live.
Thank you. Further public comment? Last call for public comment. Uh, John?
Well, thank you for that, Marian. Um, I also just want to point out back to Stephen Leahy's, um, comment about, uh, converting this into a capital expense. So if you take the assessed value of the six properties here on Rockwood Street, that's about five point six million dollars. Um, so if we assume like a one point So if we assume like a 1.9% tax rate, that means we're, the town's bringing in about 106,000 a year in tax revenue. So if we look at this as a capital cost, maybe, you know, over the next 15 years, until the road would need to be replaced, that that should cover it. Whatever this comes in, I think that would that would definitely cover what the total expense would be. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, you know, we have this ARPA fund, and that I think we still have about $1 million left in the ARPA fund right now, and this project fits in perfectly with those funds. There's an expenditure category 6.1, which is general government services, and that's what it's meant to cover. So we do have funding right now. We can make a good capital budget argument that this is the right time to get this project in play.
Thanks. And I do want to point out, there's no there's no number attached to this, so we're not really discussing funding in any way at all. Any further public comment? All right, last call for public comment. Closing public comment, opening the advisory voting session.
I move favorable action on Article 31, says petition for Rockwood Street maintenance updates.
You move favorable action?
Favorable action.
Is there a second for the motion?
Looks like someone should pose an alternative.
There is no second.
Would the opposite of favorable action?
No action.
I move no action on Article 31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for no action on Article 31. Any further advisory discussion regarding the motion on the floor, which is no action? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers?
I vote aye on no action, yes.
Wassim Basali?
Aye.
Brendan Daly?
Aye.
Peter Gallatano? Was that an aye, Peter?
Yep, aye, sorry.
Steve Leahy?
Nay, think it's a misguided vote.
Jane Matarazo?
Aye.
Dan Sickle?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Motion carries seven one. All right, on to Article 32. Let's wrap this up. Article 32, citizens petition amend the ZBL Section 4.5 open space subdivision bylaw. And is Rebecca Honeywell here?
You get her understudy, George.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, George.
So, hi, everybody. So, yeah, George Honeywell, I'm the first signatory, is maybe you can imagine how that happened. Rebecca is at a medical conference all day today. Could not attend. So I don't really have a presentation, but I have a quick sort of 20 minute training session this morning. I can talk through, as I understand this this petition. Also, just briefly, want to say congratulations to everybody here. It's a long day. I've been listening in often on all day long, and it's pretty pretty impressive, the kind of civic duty of anyone sitting on a Zoom call for eight hours. So my understanding of this is it is really two parts addressing what is sort of popularly known as the cluster zoning law. Part one is the topic where it says in the law that the existing Board of Health regulations apply. What that means in practice is the setbacks and the sort of 100 foot distance from one item to another, where wells can go and so forth, apply. Even though we, as a town, passed a cluster zoning law that is trying to allow us to preserve open space by squishing all the houses into a corner and allowing remaining open space through the rest of the area. So this change effectively says that we would create a path where a you where you can do that, and that path basically is to follow the public water requirements at the state level. So we would allow houses to perhaps be a little bit closer, so long as the public water requirements are applied. And this effectively allows us, you know, more effectively to do these cluster zonings and preserve open space while protecting water. The second change, again, as I understand it, is to have us or have the developer of one of these projects perform an environmental impact or health impact report prior to the permit. My understanding is this basically gives the town a little bit more leverage to, you know, negotiate any water issues. And and you'll help ensure clean drinking water. There was a couple of other points. Rebecca did talk to a lawyer on this, Kathleen O'Donnell, who maybe many folks know here. And her feedback was that the phrase of existing regulation shall apply does mean literally exactly that, which means that the all those places where there's a requirement for a setback or a distance between a well and a septic or the location of a well within a property line would prevent some of these subdivisions from happening. So this change then allows, again, allows protection of open space. And then just to kind of summarize, you know, my understanding again from the results, and I'll here, I'm taking a little bit advantage of going last and heard some themes through the conversation today. No cost to the town, right? This is just a change requiring a little bit of work, really more on the developers. Secondly, it should lower our liability protection as a town, so that we're less likely to get sued by someone, because we're clarifying the rules. Thirdly, and I think Paul, you were the one who said it, you know, we're all one community, and as one community, we do want to preserve open space. We also all effectively drink the same water. You know, it's the the wells reach into aquifers below us. And we want to protect the open space. We also want to protect that water. This is effectively an improvement to a law that the townsfolk, you know, passed a year or two back, the what I'm calling the cluster zoning law. And then finally, in the last previous item, you know, the discussion came up of, sorry, of climate change. I believe we're going to have more water issues with climate change. I think that's pretty evident. And this allows us as a town to basically get ready to manage that and require proper analysis of folks who want to come in and build developments to make sure that such developments don't hurt our hurt our water. And then lastly, one that I heard this morning on the discussion, I think it was the discussion of the roundabout from George, is let's not push this off another year, right? We know there are a bunch of developments coming down the pike. We want to make sure that we get these rules in place to protect the water supply sooner rather than waiting till it's too late. So again, my understanding of this bylaw seems like a pretty straightforward process, protect the water, no cost to the town, and enable some of these developments consistent with a cluster zoning law to preserve open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, did the select board vote on this?
Yes, on I don't have my date down here, but under a motion to not support, the vote was two, one, two. The two abstains are basically a way back from planning board, because planning board is still doing a public hearing on this, as required under all zoning bylaws. And the one thing I want to check, maybe with Amanda. Two, one, two, that is still a successful vote not to support, correct? Because it's a majority of a quorum, even though it's not the majority of the people voting at that.
So the 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 vote must be must be the majority of the board as composed.
Okay. Okay, so there was essentially no successful vote on this, but it was two, one, two, just, you know, I voted not to not support.
Eric, if I if I may, and with your permission, Mr. Si?
Yes.
The I had reviewed this this citizens petition and had two comments, and there are two parts to the first comment. May I share my screen again?
Yes, you may.
I'm going to turn off my camera. I do know Kathleen O'Donnell, who's a wonderful attorney, by the way. And I did have two comments with regard to the proposed amendments. Just to take the first one, which is the zoning bylaw section 4.5.10. The my only observation was that our this requirement of an EHIR at the time of of application is a good one, but it right now it conflicts with Board of Health regulations, which only requires EHAR for construction of 10 or more dwelling units. As to the other part, the zoning bylaw changed to the dimensional requirements in 4.5.6. You you pointed out that the reference to the public water supply at the state level is would allow a closer aggregation of properties. And I just wanted to point out that that may conflict with Article 2 domestic water supply of the Board of Health regulations. Under state statute, the Board of Health has very broad powers to create regulations, and there is decisional authority that says that those regulations may be more stringent than state law. So I, it was a bit difficult to understand what the the bylaw would say after amendment, because there wasn't a red line, but I wanted to leave those two comments with you. I also wanted to just emphasize what Mr. Johnson just said was that the citizens petition is sufficient to get these zoning bylaws on the town meeting warrant. But it is also required, and this was confirmed with the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit, that in order for a zoning bylaw to be enacted, the notice and hearing requirements of of Chapter 48, Section 5, which requires referral by the select board to the planning board, and then public hearings has to be completed. So I just wanted to leave you with those comments before the advisory makes its it's begins its.
Thank you. I am opening the public comment session. Paul?
During the course of the day, I had contact with Rebecca Honeywell, who was one of the sponsors of this thing, and she was saying that she's at a medical meeting in Boston all weekend, so she can't attend the advisory hearings today. I suggested her asking advisory to put this over to Monday night rather than to continue with it today as a courtesy to her so that she can actually be present. That is to say that George just didn't do a wonderful job presenting the article. He did do a wonderful. But it because she's done so much work on this, I wonder, extend the courtesy to her to put this thing over so that she can also participate.
So what you're saying is you want the A team?
Thank you, Paul. I'll I'll take that up when we get to advisory discussion. All right, I got Chris Owen and then Darrell Beersley.
Without getting into the details of the warrant article, and I respect the intent of the citizens petition, I feel I would feel very, very uncomfortable putting Board of Health regulations into a zoning bylaw without discussions with the Board of Health, joint meeting with the Board of Health and Conservation. The question regarding a public hearing, the select board has requested that planning board hold a public hearing, and we have one scheduled for April 19. My advice from the very beginning, if this article were withdrawn, we could we could work on the details. I would be very happy to work with Conservation, the Board of Health, and the applicant, and then we could bring it back to town meeting next year. If it goes to town meeting and is defeated, then it can't come back for two years. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
If I may speak to that, Mr. Si?
Yes, please.
One of the, you are correct, sir. However, the zoning article cannot come back to town meeting unless there's a favorable report by playing by the planning board. In which case, the article could come back sooner than two years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So can I, sorry, before we continue, can I just clarify with Amanda? If the planning board at its public hearing votes not to support this amendment, can it still go forward at this year's town meeting as a citizens petition?
It could. The favorable report from the unfavorable report from planning board would carry some weight, however.
Okay, thank you. All right, Darrell Beersley?
Yes, hi, Darrell Beersley, Board of Health. Just one second. Okay. The vote at the Board of Health was three three to zero, although there was one person absent from the meeting, one Board of Health member, and Dr. Honeywell was not able to take part in the vote because she was petitioning or coming to present before the Board of Health. So like the planning board, we appreciate the intent behind the regulation, but felt that the complexity was in the details of it, and that there was not clear wording on what would trigger certain actions, and then also not specifically what those actions might be. And then, in particular, I had a concern with the language that talks about in the first section, if if and when setbacks that are in our regulations could not be met, then something else would happen. But currently, we do not permit any variances on setbacks for new construction, which is really what an open space subdivision would be. And then, so that almost implies that one could have exceptions. And then the action to be taken after that was to comply with public water supply regulations, but it only says such as. It doesn't say absolutely, nor does it specify what specifically in those regulations one would need to comply with. And so it seemed to be a slippery slope. And that would be just a short review. Happy to go into details at some point. It's been a long day for you, so I'll hold off.
Thank you, Darrell. Marian?
Yeah, not wanting to prolong the discussion any more than necessary. There there are problems with both sections of this. First of all, to for the planning board and the zoning laws to require a public water supply where it's not now required by Board of Health rules seems to me strange, but that's a rule that belongs in the Board of Health. And on the second section regarding the environmental health impact report, the EHIR, essentially, an EHIR is required in the planning board subdivision regulations before any permits are being building permits, work permits are 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 cleared. So it's already in there. And in that section of the regulations, we refer to the Board of Health rules on EHIR, which also apply. So basically, to go back to the first Board of Health regulations regarding water supply protection and the disposal of wastewater shall apply, means exactly that. Which means that if the Board of Health regulations are changed, the subdivision must comply. If they're not, still must comply. So yes, there will be subdivisions that can. If they're not, still must comply. So yes, there will be subdivisions that can't be built and that's appropriate. But the Board of Health Regulations are what's in question here, not the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Michael.
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street, just calling it as a resident. Um, yes, I I appreciate that we need to adjust things. Um. It could fix up some things, but I don't see how. The first thing really improves our water protection or not, basically by going to state levels. And plus on the second one, an E H I R is. Specified by the Board of Health. I agree, we should get more information ahead of time. Um, and but that should be more better, better laid out so that I have. I don't see how it addresses the water supply issue well in the first, and in the second, I think we need more detail about what it would be. That would be in the second uh, in the second one there, and then if I put on my hat as a conservation commissioner. Um, yes, I'd like to have, it hasn't come before the Conservation Commission. And there would be certain information that we might want in the report there. But until we get it, we also still want to maintain the right to have our own information collection, but I agree that it would be nice to have. More information upfront, but that needs to be better specified. So I don't think this is ready for what we uh, to deal with the issues that they talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Chatty Mars.
Thank you. Um, I just have a question because it was raised before that. Um, that this article. Uh, actually conflicted with the Board of Health Regulations. As they stand right now, so if that is the case, all zoning articles have to be approved by the Attorney General's Office. To make sure that we are not breaking any um, Sherwin bylaws. Or state or federal regulations, so I didn't know. If Amanda could speak to that or Paul, if if there's a conflict here. With anything for the Board of Health, then I would assume that as written, that the Attorney General's Office would not approve it.
Um, I can respond to that, Mr. Si, if you prefer.
Uh, yes, please, please, Amanda.
And Mr. Duransus may wish to comment as well. Um, the uh. The Attorney General's Office will check for conflicts with state and federal law. They do not check with for conflicts within a town's own bylaws. Um, so it is uh, not common, but it sometimes can happen that a bylaw amendment can conflict with another bylaw. Here I'm talking about the Board of Health Regulations.
Thank you. Uh, Daryl.
Uh, few things. I want to mention that. Without specifying exactly what those public water supply regulations are, we cannot. Make Mast D P, who currently oversees the implementation and enforcement of public water supply regulations. To take on a well that does not meet their criteria. Therefore, we would really need to be replicating that within our own regulations. Uh, two, we have great protections for wells in our town and frankly, our. Uh, minimum radius of protection around a well is actually larger than that. Specified in the state's public water supply regulations for the size of wells that we would be talking about. Um. Oh, and there was one other thing I was going to mention, uh, and we do already have. Uh, although the E H I R does apply to. Uh, ten or more homes, there are also a number of other criteria. Uh, that qualify projects for falling under the E H I R requirements, so there, there are several layers of complexity to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Paul, you raised and lowered your hand. Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I wanted to lower my hand. Those not to confuse you, but I didn't know whether it was up or down.
Okay, all right, no problem. Thank you. Um, all right, any further public comments?
I have one, I guess, if I can. Marian, you said that, and maybe this is just educating me, and I hate to take time at the end of a long day, but. You said that E H I Rs are required already. But then Daryl just said only for ten or more units. Are those both correct? Meaning they are required for ten or more units, or they are required for all new construction?
They're retired, they're required for new subdivisions. And uh, you can go to this.
Yep.
Board subdivision regulations. Section three point three point six, if you want to mark that down, go read it and you'll find that. Uh, it it does require all the elements of an E H I R. We don't call it that, but we refer to the Board of Health. E H I R Regulations there. And that has to be fulfilled before anything can be built. And then incidentally, that's, it sounds like that's at the end of the process, but no, actually. A developer only has to submit to the planning board a definitive plan. He doesn't have to go through, he or she doesn't have to go through all the steps of preliminary meetings, preliminary plan. Uh, he can come directly to the planning board with a definitive plan. And if he does, uh, these regulations apply, and if he doesn't, they still apply at the end of the permitting process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Daryl.
I was just going to try another stab at my explanation. That there is the ten or more, but there are other criteria. That also could apply. And could reduce that number below ten. Significantly, and it also depends on things like commercial establishments and a number of other. Issues which are too complicated to get into here, but I just wanted to. Add that um, bit of refinement. Thank you.
And I I can I just add to what Daryl said, that's why we wrote. And a a health impact import, basically we called it an environmental assessment. Into the planning board regulations, because just to cover that uh, for the Board of Health in the interim.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, yeah, I mean, these, both of these really should be under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. And if the Board of Health, I mean, I would be very happy as planning board chair to work with the Board of Health. But I think the Board of Health with just a public hearing could change these regulations without needing two thirds voted town meeting.
Let's do it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, further public comments. Right, last call for public comments. Right, closing public comment, and I'm opening advisory discussion. Um, I'm sorry, Paul, did you want to get something in there?
That's that is the courtesy to the article sponsor, given that she's not available today, that you. Uh. Postpone this until Monday, so she has an opportunity to participate. She says on a texture that she's working with Kathleen O'Donnell, who's. A pretty good lawyer, I know. So. Giving somebody a chance to respond to the things that were said today. Uh, and to have it on, you you have a fallback statement. And we're at the end of the warrant. We've been going for a long time. I would urge you to extend this courtesy sort of for the time.
Sorry, I gotta jump in here. Uh, as a courtesy to the forty-six people on this call, I say we don't extend. Uh, we we gotta wrap this up.
Second, that.
Yeah, that was gonna be my first uh, my first. Order of business in advisory discussion is to address the request to postpone this to Monday. And we now have at least two, two, two votes not to postpone this.
I I would agree with the non-postponement. Um, and and also congratulate both John Hargrave and Rebecca and George. Uh, for the citizens petition because their agents have changed. Though we may vote unfavorably or not along the lines that they wish. It is the beauty of the democracy of of Sherwin for citizens to bring these to public forums. The other side of that sharp knife is that there's a process which both. Are in its infancy, uh, one with um. Uh, the plant, both with the planning board and um, the other with the Board of Health and public hearings. Where we have all have a chance as citizens or those who want to actively participate. To improve, refine and come to a consensus on the benefit for lasting. Generations, uh, as well written, so um, I covered a lot of things, so no to the extension and. Um, again, uh, I thank the citizen petitions for being agents of change.
Thanks. Any further advisory comments? Uh, let's begin just with the, do we want to postpone this? Or are we just gonna handle this today? And so far, we've only heard uh, statements in favor of completing this today.
I'm also in favor of completing this today.
I'm also in favor of completing this today, and I note that we had a pretty full discussion about this in an advisory meeting, which of course, not everyone on the call had the benefit of hearing. But we did get a lot of information and back and forth about the issues here, so. I don't think postponing would change the outcome, given the rather full information set that everybody has already.
Thank you.
Same page here.
Great. Um, all right, so it seems that we are uh, unanimous in uh, not wanting to postpone this discussion to Monday, so we'll. Continue it today. Um, I, for all the reasons that, I mean, essentially, I can just defer to all the comments that uh. Daryl Beardsley and Chris Owen and Mary Nootroy and others have said. Um, I I think there are major substantive flaws in really the entire approach of this. Um, not least of which are the items that Town Council has raised in terms of the conflicts between the wording of these articles. And our own Board of Health Regulations. Uh, I think. I i- in order for this to be in a state where I would even consider supporting it. Uh, my assumption is that the amendment would have to be so severe that it would probably qualify as not, no longer really even being the same article anymore. I don't know, Amanda, if you can speak to, you know, to to what degree the language of a warrant article can be altered. Before it is essentially considered no longer the same article and not and not really um, valid as an amendment.
Um, the the legal standard is when the public is is not sufficiently warned of the content of the article. I think that the changes that that um, or the the comments here. Would um, lead to a lengthy discussion at the planning board. Um. And, you know, it's possible that that they could be resolved during the course of hearing. Um, I I don't think that the wording is uh, and the proposed changes are so big that that they would be outside the scope of the warrant. Um. So. Does that answer your question sufficiently?
Um, that. It it does, uh, you hinted at the fact that you already know what the proposed changes are. Have you seen language as a proposed amendment to this already?
No, 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 uh, what I meant was that I saw the citizens petition on the warrant. And then looked at the existing bylaw and and made a comparison of the changes and and I I was able to. Understand what the proposed amendment would, how it would affect the existing section four point five point ten. But I wasn't really able to create a a comparison. For four point, uh, excuse me, for four point five point six, because there wasn't a red line provided. So it was hard for me to determine what the article, what the bylaw as amended would actually say. And that's something that perhaps could be fleshed out uh, at the planning board or ideally um, at the uh, if the Board of Health were to take it up.
Okay, thank you. Um. Yeah, uh, you know, I think ultimately, in my opinion, the 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 issue is that um, these, this, this amendment is attempting to. Um, alter drinking water regulations, which is the um, jurisdiction of the Board of Health. Um, and it is referring to a scenario uh, where subdivisions with more than one residential unit. Required to develop protections such as those that apply to public water supplies in Massachusetts, and so. It's attempting to say that drinking water is going to be handled in a particular way, and there is no current Board of Health Regulation to cover that. Um, and while that is certainly a worthy discussion to have with the Board of Health, I don't believe that a zoning bylaw. I don't think that it's appropriate for a zoning bylaw to um, specify um, how uh, the drinking water supply is to be. Um, categorized and or monitored or regulated. Um, other than to simply refer it to the Board of Health. Um, so i- in my opinion, there's, there are no amendments to this um, petition that could be made that, that. That would make it functional. So that, that's my my basic opinion. And furthermore, because of the nature of citizens petitions, we have to consider it uh, word for word. You know, punctuation for punctuation exactly as it is presented to us. It cannot be altered. Prior to the town meeting, so we, we as the advisory committee can't really make major substantive changes to this. Um, because it's a citizens petition and as written, it's. It just doesn't pass any, and any, any reasonable test for me. Um. And I welcome any further comments from advisory regarding this petition. All right, hearing. No discussion from advisory, I'm gonna close the advisory discussion and reopen public comment. Last call for public comment. All right, I'm closing the public comment and opening the advisory voting session.
I move no action on uh, Article thirty-two.
Second.
Thank you, I've got a motion and a second. Any. Advisory discussion relative to the motion. I'll take a roll call vote. Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wasim Basali.
Hi.
Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Stephen Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Materazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickel.
Hi.
I'm also an I. The motion carries eight zero. All right, that is the last of the uh, warrant articles and. We didn't v- very well. Thank you very much. Um, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote.
Just to point out, Steve, so people know, we're still gonna vote, I think, on our ballot questions tonight.
Yes, the select board is, select board is remaining in session and. I'm actually, I'm just closing the public hearing. The advisory committee meeting is still gonna be open. I just want to make some closing remarks in terms of our write-up. Uh, before we actually close our meeting. Um, so right now, we're just voting to close the public hearing. So we've already had a motion. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I just thank you and thank the advisory committee for the, what is it, the ten hours, nine hours? Very, very impressive. Thank you.
Well, I I want to thank Eric Johnson for recommending that I do consent agendas because that saved a lot of time, so. Thank you. Um, all right, so we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Um, can I get a? Mark Albers.
Hi.
Wasim Basali.
Hi.
Brendan Daly.
Hi.
Peter Galatano.
Hi.
Stephen Leahy.
Hi.
Jane Materazzo.
Hi.
Dan Sickel.
Hi.
Great, the public hearing is hereby closed. Um, advisory is still in session. I just wanted to let you guys know we um. Uh. If you could get me your advisory write-ups by Wednesday. Um, that'll give us a a couple days for me to then circulate, collate everyone and circulate the um, draft. Uh, copy out to everybody, and I believe Jeannie wants uh, to get the final version from me by April fifth, which is like. Next, the following Tuesday, so essentially, we have about a, about a week to get it done. Um, so, but of course, the earlier you can get it to me, please, please do. Um, does anybody from, oh, George, you have your hand up?
That's for my meeting. I wanted to be the first.
It's not, it's not a new iPhone or something, you know? All right, um, anybody from advisory have anything else they wanted to say before adjourned the meeting? Uh, if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Remove. Second.
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote to close, adjourn the meeting. Mark Albers?
Hi.
Wasim Basali?
Hi.
Brendan Daly? Peter Galatano?
Hi.
Steve Leahy?
Hi.
Jane Materazzo?
Hi.
Dan Sickel?
Hi.
I'm also an I. Five oh seven PM, the advisory committee meeting is adjourned. I'm just gonna leave this Zoom meeting up for the select board. I'm actually probably gonna stay in attendance so I can see what you guys talk about.
Right. Thank you very much, Steve. All right. So now taking over as a select board meeting. The agenda item is before us is to make a vote on the ballot questions as provided to us earlier this week for our Thursday meeting. We decided, we voted then to continue on to this meeting here. I guess I'll recognize George. Any comment suggestions?
I'll make a motion to approve the ballots as submitted.
What do you really want to do?
I second George's, uh, motion.
Okay. And I'll say, I've, I've been thinking about this, or I recognize Heidi in a minute, but I believe and maybe she can confirm about this, say, is what, whether this actually gets approved and bonded, with or without, with, with, within the levy, I think there's no harm in having it on the ballot. And even if it's within the levy, the ballot might be a moot question, but it's almost like other times where it doesn't get voted by town meeting, where we have a I'll call it pointless, but we have like, you know, a moot question on there. So I guess it's no big deal. But Heidi, please go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest about that moot question because if you do put it inside it, then you can actually remove a question from the levy limit. I mean, from the ballot question, the question one. And I was just gonna say that when you vote, debt service is included in what you raise for taxes, whether it's, it's an exempt, non-exempt item, it doesn't matter. You're paying debt service in your operating budget. So taxpayers are paying regardless of whether you're gonna say, put it on the ballot or not put on the ballot. So if psychologically you think it's better not to put this one on the ballot for the windows, we can remove that question. It's only two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's not gonna make a huge impact. So I just wanted to get that out in case anyone wanted a question on it. And I'm happy to talk to more about what the impacts of the debt service and the exempt debt, what that means, what inside and outside the debt limit means. They're very different concepts. But I don't want to have the discussion tonight. So if that's it, that's all I was gonna ask.
Thank you very much, Heidi. Uh, yeah, Paul?
One of the things we did, Heidi, was to free up some free cash when we were talking about the Sean Colleen capital articles. And with that free up of free cash, is there some free cash that could be applied to some of these items? So that we wouldn't need to do all these ballot questions.
Question six, I'd recommend taking off the roundabout if you, and, and I would say that's almost, if you are taking the trees off, which was a hundred and fifty, you could put the hundred and fifty of this into free cash would be an exact swap in the dollar amount. And that would still be right where I was looking at the calculation. And that would actually eliminate a question.
I'm not comfortable having that kind of discussion now. I don't mind. You said there's a kind of a, what do you call it, an off? Whatever, this is a side discussion among a few key people to determine what should or should not be bonded. I'd rather wait till that conversation happens. And maybe some of us can be involved in that conversation rather than kind of right now, just take things on and off. I'm not comfortable really removing anything as presented to us earlier on this. And if, like you said, we can move it at a latter time, vote for, put it on now, move it at a latter time, then well, I'd rather address it like that.
Exactly. I think this gives advisory all the options of how advisory, the treasurer and the finance director and town council, when they make, when they have their motions meetings, it gives them all these options. And I think that's a fair thing to do. And Jackie, I forgot Jackie.
All right. And I believe George moved and Jeff seconded. I'm just gonna make sure the friendly amendment to include the question mark and question eight is there.
Yeah, Jackie, Jackie has.
Oh, yeah. You go ahead.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I was just a little confused about the discussion about removing the ballot question because you guys, if you do that, you have to do it by, I don't have the date in front of me. It's to whatever that Tuesday, April fifth. So you have to remove the ballot question by April fifth, otherwise it's gonna have to go on the ballot.
All right. That goes back to our previous thing where it's a moot question then. Do you know what I mean? I don't think it's, I don't think it changes it anything that much. So either the question is a moot, it's on there or it's moot and still on there. And I hate to bring up the source subject, but it's similar to like the turf fields where it got voted down, but there's still a question on there. So wound up being like, you know, a moot question. At some point, maybe we'll tackle the whole timing issue of this whole thing. I know it's under state laws, but it, it seems like the last four, I've been on this like about four years and we struggle with this every single year. The timing of these, of these questions, the timing of town meeting. The one time it actually kind of worked out was a COVID because everything just got blown the hell out of, sorry, the heck out of water and the, the timing and everything else, you know, so. I'm fine with putting them on as is unless someone grossly objects. I think we're just kind of overthinking it at this point. And I don't want to make the decision about like, oh, the road or whatever, the roundabout will come out of free cash. I don't think we're right now after nine and a half hours of meeting and everything else prepared to make that. I'd rather do improvements on that, whatever. I'd rather just have a moot question if we do something else with it. Because to be honest with you, a couple of these questions are also on our top four suggested for, um, for earmarks as well. So, yeah, Paul?
I agree with that. What I'd do is to have each of these votes separate because I'm gonna vote in favor of some and oppose the other. And my My motion is to approve the whole ballot. Then I'm gonna have to vote no on the whole ballot.
Okay.
Explain my reasoning to the voters who are listening. I only vote for an override if it's necessary and if it's asked for by advisory. Given what I've heard from the, the town treasurer and given the prior discussion question one, I don't think question one should be on the ballot. And I don't think question six could be on the ballot. Further, I would say that a number of citizens have complained to me about this endless effort to have all these override questions every year. One person told me they, they kind of resent that they're being asked to, to quote, increase their taxes clause, unquote, where these things should be ordinarily done. They pay their taxes. They don't want to see their taxes increased. So with that kind of input from citizens and with consistency with what the way I voted over the last ten years or more. I don't want to vote in favor of an override unless it's really clear. Those, those two aren't clear. And so I want about no on question one. If that means I have to vote no on the whole ballot, I will vote no on the whole ballot.
All right, Jeff, do you have, uh, anything?
I, I just think I need to correct something, Paul. You know, maybe it's perception in the town, but funding these with debt is a positive thing, not a negative thing. And the reason why is because then you're making citizens that move into town fifteen years from now, pay for part of the new fire truck. If we pay for it with free cash right now, then the current citizens are paying for a thirty-year asset. So the reason for bonding, there is some debt expense, which is pretty low right now, but is to level the costs out over time and to make future citizens pay for their share of the cost.
Issue for me. And, and to add to that, what, what Jeff, to add what Jeff said, I totally agree with him. It's exempt or non-exempt, Paul, it still raises the taxes. It still raises the taxes, whether it's exempt or non-exempt. So don't say it doesn't because it, it's, if you spend money, you raise taxes. I'm just telling you what citizens are saying to me. Okay, well, maybe you should explain it to them better than that. Want to spend money, it's going to raise taxes, not whether it's exempt or not.
And the one thing I want to add is that all, all these capital items, they're, you know, they put it under as a exemption under two and a half or whatever, as outside the levy, you know, outside of that. But the reality is, we have not actually been outside of two and a half levy in years. And I mean, years and years and years and years. And it's a lot of far back, I can remember a long before I was on the board. I think even when I was a kid here in town, I think it was the nineties, the last time we've had the real levy, um, the levy breaks. Maybe in the early two thousands, but as long as I can remember, when I moved back to town in oh six, there's been numerous questions on the ballot, numerous requests for capital exemptions and never exceeding the two and a half levy. So I don't know how this is any different than previous years. It does seem like this is the first time we've had this conversation really in the last, in the last four years that I've been here. But I don't really see how it's really any different than, than other times. Anyways, Heidi, if you could speak up.
Sorry, I mean, I, I'd like to do it another day, but actually, the report I did and that report I sent around last twenty-one years, we've exceeded two and a half in twenty of the twenty-one years. So we are not able to raise enough without using the exempt debt amount. So it's just when, so you say we haven't exceeded two and a half, we actually do exceed two and a half. We don't exceed the maximum levy, levy because we're able to add the exempt debt to the two and a half amount to reach a maximum levy. Only last year was the first time in twenty-one years where we actually met that we were under two and a half. So I was surprised. I mean, I put all this data together and I, I looked at the numbers and I was like shocked that that's how it came out, but.
As Jeff said, the exempt debt allows us to buy things like fire trucks where we'd be way over our levy if we tried to get that within our non-exempt or pay with it with free cash, which is inappropriate for a twenty-year asset. So the way we're exempting debt is actually appropriate, I think, for these, for these long capital expenditures.
All right. Um, so we do have, in fact, Jeff, if you could lower everyone's hands, Jeff, or make me co-host, that's pretty much all I do when I'm people's hands.
Forgot to lower my own. I'm, I'm guilty too. Sorry.
Okay, so a motion and a second to put these ballot questions on here. And thank you, Heidi, for that education. I actually did not realize that. Actually kind of affects some of my thoughts as well. I guess I'll collect the vote with any further discussion. Then just a reminder, one, it's to, um, accept the, uh, the ballot as is. Except with the question mark. Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
All right.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Hi.
And Paul?
Very.
And I will be, okay. Uh, thank you very much. I don't think there's any, um, remaining business. Everyone has a closing comments before we, uh, close the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
All right.
Great job, I would say.
Glad we all got it all done today and not having to come back.
Earlier than last year, too. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. I gotta go feed my cats. All right, thanks, Ellen.
Thanks, guys. Ciao.